Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Palo Alto City Council on Monday, August 11th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Mayor Lawing.
Present.
Councilmember Lou.
Here.
Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Rechtel.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thinker, here. Councilmember Lifted Hames. For the record, six present, Councilmember Lifted Hames absent.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any agenda changes, additions, or deletions tonight?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Then we're gonna go directly to public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So this is not for items that you see listed on the agenda. This is open public comment. We have eight speakers?
Correct, we have eight speakers. Um, nine. Going with three minutes?
Yes.
Our first speaker is Jeffrey S.
To the City Council, I am Jeffrey Fenton. And I am here representing the Palo Alto Family YMCA, where I am a member of the Board of Managers there at that branch, which is one of eleven branches of the YMCA of Silicon Valley. We are here to thank the City of Palo Alto for co-sponsoring our eighth annual health fair being held at Mitchell Park Community Center on September 21st. We would like to extend an invite to all the council members and community members to join us at this event. Please save the date. Again, that will be Sunday, September 21 from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Mitchell Park Community Center. We would love to see you there. Our three focus areas for this year's event are healthy weight, tobacco cessation, and alcohol and cancer. The health fair will feature health experts, nonprofit exhibitions, activities, and workshops, and it's open to friends and families of all ages. Some highlights include insightful speeches from Stanford Medicine experts, a display and tour of a fire engine from the Palo Alto Fire Department, a craft station, and an exercise workshop to get the community physically engaged. Last year, we welcomed over 1,000 participants to the health fair, and we're excited to see even more of the community join us this year. Again, we'd like to thank the City of Palo Alto for their continuous support in making this event possible. With your support and the use of this space, we're able to offer quality programs and build meaningful connections with the community. We look forward to sharing this day with you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael K., followed by Raymond G.
Greetings. My name is Michael Kishnik. I'm a resident of 1467 Hamilton, and I've been here for most of the past 50 years. I come before you to call your attention to two articles that appeared in the Sunday New York Times yesterday. They referred to the Zuckerberg Chan compound. The articles covered several topics, including the successful effort by the family to create a compound despite a 2016 vote by the Architectural Review Board against it, by the aggressive use of loopholes and ambiguity in our planning codes. It also covered the illegal operation of a private school despite complaints by neighbors formally submitted going all the way back to 2021. And finally, it reported on the abuse of police power with any legal authority to threaten neighborhood residents with being towed in support of a purely private party on the block. I understand, of course, that any newspaper doesn't get everything right, and more importantly, leaves a lot out. And so I want to make sure that you know the neighborhood would be eager to be in conversation with you, should you come to visit, or if you'd like to talk to any of us, and I'm available for that purpose too. Our neighborhood and many other neighborhoods in Palo Alto are under immense pressure as the very wealthy have huge appetites for real estate. As the New York Times adequately demonstrated, we are unable to resist that pressure on our own. We need your help and look forward to helping you do that. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Raymond G., followed by Price H.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Owens. I am a member of Alpha Uprise, which is the Black Democratic Party of Santa Clara County. I'm here to speak to the council in regards to Santa Clara County and its residents. Palo Alto has 19 billionaires in the city. The inequality of wealth, this portion of wealth that's in the city compared to rest of Santa Clara County is vast. We know the federal government has cuts, which will severely impact this county by about billion dollars. I was talking to a gentleman earlier, and he was talking about how do we move Palo Alto forward? Now, I told him that we can't move Palo Alto forward, but moving Palo Alto forward, there's a bunch of community members behind. I am for also formally unhoused and live with an opportunity center around a bunch of homeless individuals that will be impacted by the federal cuts. I asked Palo Alto and the city residents, specifically the city council, to use your wealth to help the residents of Santa Clara County. I know it's not the responsibility of Palo Alto and its residents to take care of Santa Clara County, but compassion is not a responsibility. Compassion is something you're wrong with. The care for human beings is something that's innate. I asked the residents and the city councils to take into consideration how you can help the county so that the residents that are less fortunate, those that come from marginalized communities historically, those that have been left behind by Palo Alto, that Palo Alto should show them that they haven't been forgotten. I know it's unpopular, Santa Clara County will be put on a ballot to raise taxes, but Palo Alto could burden that burden by itself. We are one of the wealthiest counties in the nation. We gotta use that wealth for good. Having compassion for the county members is not something that you should be told what to do. You guys are here because you care about the residents of Palo Alto, and I assume you care here because you care about the residents of Santa Clara County. I don't know what that looks like. I asked Palo Alto to help Santa Clara County and those residents that will be left behind. I am a Palo Alto voter. Like I said, my housing district is the opportunity center, and everybody in the opportunity center will be impacted by those federal cuts, the cuts to Medicaid. That's a one billion dollars that won't be helping those individuals that are left behind. We have an enormous wealth here. I ask to use your wealth and to balance out the inequalities that the US government is trying to impose here in California and throughout the rest of the country. That's because I'm black, as I said, I'm formally cross-rated. I'm raising, I will raise my son here. If you look in the residency, if you look on the board, there is no African-Americans here. We've been left behind. It's that by design. I ask, I don't know how you fix it, but I ask that you do fix it. I also am here to support the youth on their voting structure to be 16 and over and to empower our youth for the votes so they have a voice in their future. It may have been unpopular decisions, but going with the status quo has got us nowhere.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Press H., followed by Liz G.
Good evening. My name is Press here. This is my wife Tracy. We are residents on Middlefield Road in Palo Alto. Primarily, I'm discussing the area between Loma Verde and East Meadow. We've lived at this spot for about 30 years, and the traffic speeding is, in my view, is ridiculous. I've called the city police on numerous occasions. They basically say that people are going with the flow of traffic, even though from my observation, they're going about 40, 50 miles an hour. And when I called the dispatcher, they basically said that the person who's doing the 25, which is the speed limit, is causing more hindrance, which I find unbelievable. So between those two areas I mentioned, there are no traffic calming measures whatsoever. Once you enter midtown, all the way up to University Avenue, there's a lot of traffic calming measures. So what happens is you have that stretch where people just speed before they hit that area. I myself am avid cyclist. I wouldn't dream of going on Middlefield Road cycling. It's just too dangerous. Also, to compound this, there is a bus stop by Ashton with no crossing whatsoever. And we see a lot of people frequent the four churches, either during the week or on the Sundays, and those people are crossing four lanes of traffic in order to frequent those churches where there is no crossing. And it's, you know, the times I've seen people just near misses in that area is unbelievable. So therefore, I know from what the police said, they were somewhat, they couldn't do much. But they definitely need some kind of calming measures going there because what I'm seeing right now is just a huge accident waiting to happen. So hopefully, a city can do something because there is nothing between those two spots. Even if it's whatever you can think of, it would be greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz G., followed by Monica M.
Good evening. I just wanted to start with a couple of questions. Who owns this town, or more aptly, who is owned by this town? The city and the council insists on delaying housing time and time again for the working folks of this town, while billionaires reside and surveil us from their safe houses on one, two, and three city blocks. I'm a hardworking head of household community member. I have vacated my residence at Related Mayfield Place because of its unsafe and uninhabitable conditions, because of its faulty electric, pests such as drain flies, warm water for months and months, excessive noise and air pollution, disastrous residential parking and towing of residential cars. I have been involved with fair and equitable workforce housing for over 12 years here, starting with fighting the Maybell referendum. I was named last year a Palo Alto Forward Housing Hero for 2024. Finding a rental recently has been short of a nightmare. The requirements are outlandish, 750 or better on a credit proof of four times income to asking rent, $45 to $60 per rental application for every adult member of the household, no evictions or convictions. Even with an impeccable rental record, as I am, I am considered a liability. In fact, a landlord even said that if I had only owned a home, she'd be more secure in renting to me. So I am here tonight to tell you or ask you to please move forward and quickly on more housing and to make accountable the billionaires who live in this town, who seem to own us. And again, who do we own and who owns us? So, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Monica M., followed by Sven T.
Hi, I'm Monica Moore. I'm a 15-year resident of Menlo Park, and I want to tell you what I love about pickleball and how it's changed my life. I grew up playing tennis and other team sports, and then as I got older, I gravitated more towards individual activities like biking, swimming, hiking, things that I could do by myself. And then I would do those things, and then I would come home and read and kind of spend the afternoon being solo and thinking that I'm an introvert. And about a year ago, I decided to try pickleball. I would go to Neyland Park in Menlo and look through the gate and watch people, and then I'd go home. And then about the third time I went, a voice from inside said, "Hey, you got a paddle?" And this was a man named David Yoshida, who is also a player from Mitchell Park. So I got my little paddle, and I went into Neyland, and I played for about three hours. And I was not done after three hours, but people were leaving. So I was driving home, thinking, "This is so amazing that I just showed up here, and this group of people just welcomed me in. I had a great time." And I started with strangers, and I felt like I left a bunch of friends. And I kept going back, meeting more people, playing more, and then learning that a lot of those people also played at Mitchell Park. So I went over to Mitchell Park, started playing there, and meeting more people, and having a lot more fun. And now, about a year later, there are well over 50 new contacts in my phone, all because of pickleball. And some of these people have become really good friends. And it turns out that I'm not such an introvert after all. I have a very active social life now, and I play lots of pickleball, and all because of, you know, pickleball, obviously, and because of Mitchell Park and the community there. And so I enthusiastically recommend expanding the number of courts there. It just amazes me how much people of all walks of life, all ages, will play together. I've met so many people who I would never meet outside of pickleball. I wouldn't meet them at work. I wouldn't meet them in the community, let alone share an activity with them and become friends because of pickleball. And the older we get, the more we tend to get isolated. There's, you know, there's a loneliness epidemic, even with young people. And pickleball is such a great community builder. It brings people together from all walks of life. People are not on their phones. They're not on screens. They're doing physical activity and having a good time. And to me, it's given me like a second youth because I feel like a kid who just goes to the park to see who's there, and it doesn't matter who's there. If it's people I know, great. If it's people I don't know, I know them when I leave. So please, more courts at Mitchell.
Our next speaker is Sven T., followed by Star T.
Hi, Sven Thiessen, 20-year resident of Palo Alto, chemical engineer. And I'm embarrassed to report that my profession has failed you, particularly our utility, in that when you combust natural gas, the CH4 molecule, chemistry does amazing miraculous things which we don't understand. It produces the benzene molecule, which is a hydrocarbon aromatic ring, C6H6. We don't understand how it happens, but we do know that benzene is a carcinogen and that that's limiting our lifespan. It's essentially like having a gas stove in your house is essentially like having a smoker in your house. And we, our utility, is doing that to our residents. So I'm just requesting the council ask the utility to send out one of their progressive notices they do every month about how an induction stove is faster, cleaner, easier to use, safer, both from a use perspective and from the emissions, because there aren't any. Second, I'm wearing my Hawaiian shirt in excitement to celebrate and to invite you to an event on Wednesday at 10:00 AM. We're building an ADU in our backyard. Could you please pass these around? I'm sorry. Could you please pass them? We're building an ADU in our backyard, and we're using what's called an advanced framing technology, such that, and I didn't expect to be here to announce this, today at 10:00 AM, we had a pile of lumber already pre semi-assembled on the pad of the ADU, and we've already got framing up and running. And we would like to share this technology. We think we may actually be able to build our ADU faster than we got the permit. And in terms of helping with housing, I think that's pretty good, although it may not say so much about our permitting process. This ADU, like our main house, Project Green Home, our house is the one at 314 Stanford. It has the electric car charger out front that's provided over 400,000 miles of carbon-free driving. We're doing a demonstration to show how energy efficient you can get to reduce our electricity use and simultaneously make it incredibly comfortable and clean and functional and beautiful and all that other fun stuff. So Wednesday, Publix invited to. Wednesday, 10:00 AM to noon, come see the framing. It is a construction site. Please wear closed-toed shoes and be aware that there's things, trip hazards and power tools going on. But again, this framing process is pretty neat. It's an advancement in building technology. Y'all are invited to come. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Star T., followed by Julia Z.
Good evening. I'm a 23-year resident of Barron Park. Although professional therapy should be part of any mental health program, I believe positive mental health can be attained and maintained between people in our community by some of the connections we make through our community activities. So I want to take a few minutes just to express our family's gratitude for some of those which offer connection and some of which are sponsored by our city council, our city government, rather. The National Night Out, it was, you know, a wonderful event. We get to meet our police, our fire, our emergency services, who offer the CERT program. Silicon Valley Bike Exchange was there, as was the Palo Alto Climate Team. It was a wonderful event. The Utility Box Art Lift Grants, those, I watched people painting those along Meadow and some other streets, and they're fabulous. They're whimsical. They're beautiful, and it was a great project. Our Protected Bike Lanes, I know there's some criticism about them not being used that much. I love them personally. I ride on El Camino quite often, and I want to remind people that a friend of mine who's been here a long time said it took about 10 years for people to use 280 when it opened. So we just need people to actually opt in. The Ross Road YMCA, you know, it is such a welcoming, healthy place for teens, retired people, and everyone in between. Thank you for supporting them in any way that you do. They are our default community center for right now. It's a fabulous place. Our Parks and Rec Department, for the many events that they create for both, you know, that welcome young people and older people, including the upcoming cornhole tournament. The Posdi Adult School and teacher Montesino. I'm very grateful they accepted my proposal to offer a Cooking in Your Twenties and Beyond course, a foundational cooking, and to offer another path for younger people to connect with each other. Check it out in the catalog. Carol Garston, for her huge effort in organizing Third Thursdays, and I know she does the first Fridays maybe in Los Altos. Those events on Cal Ave have been wonderful, and the more the better, and I just encourage everybody to attend those. And then lastly, all our youth groups, the Palo Alto Youth Council, the Teen Advisory Board, Teen Arts Council, YCS, and more. Thank you for your hard work and keep it up. I wonder if you shouldn't create more kiosks around town and manage them, including more on our high school campuses. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julia Z.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. I hope you're all doing well and enjoying summer. I'm Julia Zeitlin. I'm an incoming sophomore at Stanford University and Director of the Cool Cities Coalition. Last summer, the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition, PASC, led the led the Bay Area Heat Mapping Campaign through the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration's Urban Heat Island Mapping Initiative. Together with local cities, community organizations and volunteers, we mapped the distribution of extreme heat in Palo Alto, East Palo Alto and Menlo Park. We partnered with the City of Palo Alto, the City of East Palo Alto, Bellhaven Action and more. So on one of the hottest days of the summer last year, we had a total of thirty volunteers drive one hundred eighty miles from sunrise to sunset to collect heat, temperature and location data. And so the data that we collected highlighted hotspots throughout the cities where residents are most in need of cooling solutions like expanding tree canopy and other green infrastructure. And so along with several PASC members, we recently launched the Cool Cities Coalition to focus on deploying cooling solutions and bringing cities together to share best practices for how we can build more climate and heat resilient cities as climate change worsens and as our summers get hotter. And so I wanted to let everyone know that the Cool Cities Coalition is hosting an upcoming Extreme Heat Summit this Sunday, August seventeenth, at the Cooling Landing Education Center in East Palo Alto from one to three PM. The summit will feature an amazing speaker lineup, including our very own Vice Mayor Vinker, Director of Emergency Management for San Mateo County, Dr. Shruti De Podkar, the former mayor of Belmont and California Climate Policy Director at Pacific Environment, Davina Hurt, and Resilient Leadership Program Manager at Climate Resilient Communities CRC, Camille Lang. And so we have many other community partners that are co-sponsoring this event, including the City of Palo Alto and PASC. And I would like to invite the city, everyone here, the city council. We hope to see you there to engage in a conversation about how our bodies are impacted by extreme heat, how our environment is impacted, how we can protect ourselves, how we can recognize the signs of heat illness, and then also more broadly, how we can address the issue of building cities more equipped to deal with the future of climate change. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Very good. Thank you. Just, we're going to go to council member questions, comments and announcements. Just what I mentioned to folks in the, in the audience, if you're wanting to speak at the study sessions, you need to fill out a card in, in the front. And depending on how many speakers we have total, we'll, we'll think about the number of minutes that each can get, but you could do that during council members' comments. So council members, write them up. We'll expect stories about what I did this summer. Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember.
So thank you. I wanted to give some updates on some important developments that have been occurring with our transportation agency partners. First, at MTC, we ordered a quarter million dollar grant for advancement of the design and environmental work on the Quarry Road extension at the University Avenue train station. So that's going to help spur that process. It also indicates that MTC is committed to that project going forward as it, it proceeds beyond the initial design and environmental work. And I, more importantly, I wanted to speak about what hopefully everybody has read about that Caltrain, San Mateo County and now VTA have opted to participate in the regional trans- transportation tax, which is primarily a transit funding tax intended for the November twenty twenty-six ballot. And the impetus for this is really that the fixed rail agencies in the Bay Area have far from fully recovered from the changes in commute patterns from the COVID period and, and related matters. And they're operating at very severe budget deficits that are projected to grow significantly in coming years. Up until now, they've been living off of federal COVID relief funds. And as we all have recognized, rather than additional state and federal support for a variety of needs that we have in our region, Medicare needs and the county's needs on that, transit needs, we're seeing that federal dollars have been pulled back. And as a result, state dollars are fewer to be able to support these needs. On top of that, sales tax revenue has actually declined in the last year and it's hitting all these agencies importantly. So Caltrain that is seeing a great recovery in ridership, especially since we got the new, the new trains, but the new expanded schedule so that everybody can ride any hour of the day and on weekends. Still, Caltrain's deficit is projected to be about seventy-five million dollars and would need that support from the member agencies to continue to provide the service that we have. VTA a year ago was looking like they had pretty solid projections going forward in large part because VTA has never had good fare box recovery. Caltrain had great fare box recovery and so they, like Bart, took a huge hit when ridership went down. But now even because the sales tax declines, VTA is looking at major deficits going forward and a fear that bus schedules would be able, would have to be cut as well as the question of how they pay for their share of the Caltrain need as one of the three member agencies. By participating in this measure, not only are all those deficits met, but VTA would have about a hundred and fifty million dollars a year to be able to restore service to levels that we haven't had for twenty-five years. So this is a big deal for transit in the region. Transit in the region is extremely important, not only for our residents, but for our economy. And so we're going to be looking as this goes forward, where hopefully the legislature will approve this in the coming weeks. But it's going to be a heavy lift to make sure the voters of those five counties support this measure as we move forward. So thanks.
Councilmember, what's been the bump since, in ridership, since the new trains came on in the, in the schedule?
Caltrain's ridership has gone up almost fifty percent since last October.
Five zero.
Five zero.
I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that.
So it's, it's now at, we're, every month we're getting new numbers, but it's about sixty-plus percent of the pre-COVID numbers. But interestingly, the biggest growth has been on the weekends and in the, the shoulder hours. We have trains running all during the day and people are not just commuters that are taking Caltrain, which means that the commuter ridership is still stuck at maybe around forty percent. And so that's a big problem.
Okay, Vice Mayor Vinker.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. The first is, as you know, we get our electric power through the Northern California Power Agency, which we're a member of along with fifteen other entities. And so this past week, there was a bus tour put on by NCPA where we brought legislative staff from Washington DC and from Sacramento out here to see how we generate and use this power with publicly operated utilities. So we are not PG&E customers. We don't have that profit adding to consumer rates. But we obviously, especially in the current climate, economy, political climate, really need for our legislators to understand what we need in order to offer that. So it was, it was interesting. We had on this bus tour, we had staff from Congressman Licardo's office, Congressman Conna's office, from the US Senate's Energy Committee. We also had them from Mark Berman's office and from the State Legislative Energy Committee and from Speaker Rivas's office. So there was a lot of interest in seeing how we do this. And they started up in Murphy's where there's hydropower and of course, we get about forty percent of our electricity from hydropower. But then we went down to Santa Clara and Santa Clara is also a member of NCPA. And we went to Intel and we got a tour of data, data center. And we've all heard how much energy data centers require. And NCPA tries to keep its energy as green as possible. This city is entirely carbon neutral. Not all of the members are, but we're working on it. So it's very interesting to see and understand exactly what the demands are and what they're projected to be. Then the folks came up here to Palo Alto. We went over to Stanford to the Door School and talked to smart people over there about how to meet these energy needs going forward. I had the privilege of addressing the group at dinner that evening and we talked about these needs and the nice thing about NCPA is we can learn from each other, from other men, member entities as to how to do best practices. For example, I was back east about ten days ago and had coffee with the former Assistant Secretary of Energy who was out here a few years ago for our climate summit. And he was raising this issue and saying, can't local communities do something about this through your permitting and citing and zoning and all of that? Well, Santa Clara has some pretty interesting terms and conditions we learned about. So that's something that we can now explore here as well. So it was, it was very useful in that respect. The next day, the mayor addressed the group and we showed them our new substation out on Hanson Road that was paid for through a public-private partnership and a lot of folks learned from that. So it was a helpful thing to try to take us into our future in a green and innovative way. Secondly, I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Lou and Councilmember Bert for attending, along with me, the Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action Climate Summit on Saturday. That was an inspiring, inspiring event. We see in this town, the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition, like Julia founded and worked on for so many years. There were five hundred youth at this thing and, and they were just brilliant and wonderful and put on an all-day affair. The League of California Cities was a sponsor, so we tried very hard to get other councils to realize what we see here in Palo Alto all the time, how helpful it is to work with, with our youth. So we had a series of panels. I spoke on the Health and Climate Panel and I truly believe that the health, the impacts of climate change on health is something that as we lift up, we're going to get more and more people to realize we need to take climate action. And there were several physicians on that panel that spoke about that. And I had my Bay Area Air District hat on and spoke about some of the policy changes that we're trying to do to mitigate the health impacts of climate change, which are unfortunately very real and very immediate. So that was a, a good day and I was pleased to see quite a number of city leaders attend that. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rechtall.
Yeah, both Councilmember Bert and I showed up at the Ventura Ice Cream Social yesterday. And the new Bull War Park, as on Parks and Rec, and that came through. So it was very special for me. But it really reinforced that parks really are a, a community assets. It really fosters togetherness and really have to make sure that as we're adding housing, we, we make sure that all residents have the same type of access to parks. That's a very important thing, speaking as a Parks and Rec guy. The second thing, we got a real big earful about RV parking. There are a lot of residents that are concerned and Venture has a lot of parking of RVs. And so a lot of residents are really interested in the upcoming, in a couple of weeks, there will be a policy and services that discuss this. And so there will be a lot of interested listeners to that meeting. So, that's all.
Councilmember Lou.
Thank you. It was a great summer full of many community events where I was able to meet at least several of the people in this room. I won't list them all, but one thing that I will plug and that I do appreciate is how the orange barriers seem to be removed from Cal Ave as of today or as recently. So that is really nice. I have not been able to fully take it in myself, but the openness, the wide open spaces, I think are a nice feeling and a positive step forward. So excited for that and other developments on Cal Ave in the future.
That's breaking news because in my inspection last week, they were still there. So. Yeah, I have a couple of things as well. First, I want to just add to the Vice Mayor's comments on NCPA that our new utilities director gave a talk about what we have accomplished so far and what we are going to accomplish directly and aggressively. And, you know, Ellen Cooper Tori was just outstanding. His expertise just shown through. Got a lot of compliments directly to me after that. He held the audience captive and, you know, Palo Alto came off very well in his comments to that esteemed, also very experienced group. So we've got a, we've got a good man on board there. I just want to mention about National Night Out, which we heard from a member of the public. It was just another amazing community event. Just, I love seeing lots of families with smiles, particularly the kids climbing all over the, the vehicles, but the interaction between the police and the fire and so on was just exactly the goal and exactly what was accomplished. I was up at Bull War Park and then went down to a smaller location down at Gamble Gardens. But it was just, it was just, it was amazing. And I finally got to sit in the driver's seat of the new first ever Rivian Police Cruiser. And it's now all tricked out with all the necessary police gear. It accelerates from zero to sixty in three seconds. So no problems catching the bad guys. The only problem was I didn't have a key. So I only sat there, but it's ready to go. It's in service. And then I want to cover one event that, that I attended on July twenty-eighth, which was a really important event. I spoke at a ribbon cutting and a check presentation for the installation of EV charging stations at Alta Housing's Colorado Park Apartments. It's just a great example. It's just a great example of how local and state programs working together, adding their expertise and their money can support the transition to an equitable electric future for people of just all economic levels. And this was EV Match, the organization, California Energy Commission, Alta Housing and the city working closely together to, to bring this, this project to life. And our, by definition, our utilities department as well. As you all know, the EV adoption of, of electric vehicles in the state and in Palo Alto are very high. It's seventeen percent of EVs. But seventeen percent of the EVs in Palo Alto are driven by those who live in multi-unit properties and the other eighty-three percent are driven by residents who live in single-family homes. So installations like this are going to help change that fraction and get multifamily homes and lower-income folks also having access to that. And I talked with a number of residents. They were just ecstatic that that was happening. So just want to report out on that. It may have been under the radar and I wanted some visibility on. Okay, thank you. Now we are going to go to our study sessions. There are two study sessions. Staff. As they will point out, while I get up there, I'll take a moment. As they will point out, there are no decisions being made tonight by, by city council. This is, yeah, six council members, one being absent, are going to be giving their opinions on each of these potential projects that are under a particular zoning situation that will be described by staff. And then they'll take it from there and we'll go to public comment after that. What's that? I can't hear the mic wasn't on.
Director Lake.
Good evening, Mayor Lyle and city council members. Jonathan Lake, Director for Planning and Development Services. Welcome back. I have Emily Callis, our senior planner with our office, is going to give the presentation for tonight's pre-screening.
Hi, good evening. As Director Lake said, my name is Emily Callis. Next slide, please. This applicant, or yeah, this application tonight, council is looking at a pre-screening for rezoning. Pre-screenings are required for any legislative change, including rezonings prior to submittal of a formal application. These pre-screenings are intended to solicit early feedback on proposed projects and do not and cannot result These pre-screenings are intended to solicit early feedback on proposed projects and do not and cannot result in any formal action. Tonight, the council members please should refrain from forming firm opinions supporting or opposing the project as the proposal may return as a formal quasi judicial uh, PC rezoning application. Next slide. This project in particular is a pre-screening to rezone from Commercial Services, CS Zoning District, to uh, Planned Community Planned Home Zoning, PHZ, to allow for construction of 120 rental units in a six-story structure with above-grade parking. Uh, this project located at 4256 El Camino Real would replace a hotel project which was entitled in 2020 and received building permits. Um, but construction never began. It was not built. Next slide. The project again is located at 4256 El Camino Real. The nearest major intersection is El Camino uh, Real at Charleston or Astridero Road to the north. This is in the Housing Incentive Program, HIP area. However, this is um, not a housing inventory site, a housing element opportunity site. The project is also not proposing to use uh, the Housing Incentive Program development standards. Uh, other nearby uses include the Palo Alto Redwoods condominiums directly uh, to the rear kind of wrapping around the project site. Additionally, there are single-family residences and R1-zoned properties within 150 feet of the project site. Uh, it's also nearby to other various hotels and the Palo Alto Event Center. Next slide. This is a quick look at the site plan for the project. In terms of compliance with the development standards, the building height proposed is 79 feet 6 inches. The um, CS zoning district would have a maximum of 50 feet with a 35-foot limit near the R1 zones. Uh, additionally, the proposed lot coverage is 87%, where up to 50% is allowed or up to 100% under the Housing Incentive Program. The floor area ratio proposed is 3.57 to 1, whereas the maximum for the HIP would be 2.85 to 1 or up to 3.5 allowed for housing element sites. The parking provided um, would be 100 spaces in um, the tandem um, parking lift configuration that you can see in the image on this slide. 130 parking spaces would be required by the base zoning uh, in Palo Alto Municipal Code 18.52. Um, or 125 units would be required under the HIP zoning development standards, um, which were recently uh, revised to align with the state density bonus parking requirements. This project uh, does not currently propose a loading space where one would be required for any project that provides more than 50 housing units. And lastly, uh, this project proposes 130 square feet of usable open space where 150 square feet per unit is required um, by the CS zoning district. Next slide. This is a quick look at the elevation drawings. Again, the proposed height is 79 feet 6 inches with um, additional height for the elevator and stair tower. Next slide. Next slide. Some key considerations for council this evening. Uh, this project is located along the El Camino Real corridor where some other large housing development projects um, currently um, have been proposed uh, which exceed the base zoning through either housing focus area development standards or using builder's remedy. This project also excludes retail space, though it is in the um, subject to the Retail Preservation Code as currently written. The use prior to um, prior to this project and prior to the hotel project was a restaurant approximately 3,300 square feet. Um, however, upcoming council review of map revisions may alter this requirement between now and when this project uh, becomes formally submitted. In terms of the Planned Community Special Requirements, which are in Palo Alto Municipal Code 18.38, um, the requirement to um, have a reduced height adjacent to a hun- or within 150 feet of R1-zoned property uh, would apply. The current nearest R1 property um, is not a single-family house. It does happen to be um, an apartment building. It's 110 feet away. The applicant would be seeking to modify the 35-foot height limit through the PHC application. It would be one of the uh, zoning development standard changes for the PHC. Then lastly, regarding affordable housing, the conceptual project does not quite meet the 20% inclusionary at 80% AMI required for PHZ. This would need to be revised um, as a part of the formal application. Next slide. Uh, many neighbor comments were received uh, primarily from residents in the Palo Alto Redwoods condominiums community. Uh, some common concerns across these emails included increased traffic congestion, uh, not enough parking for the proposed number of units, a lack of setbacks and/or stepbacks from the neighboring residents, concerns regarding privacy and how the building um, is designed in that regard and the importance of protecting the existing redwood trees which um, border the property. Next slide. Regarding the California Environmental Quality Act, no review is required for this preliminary project and a full review in accordance with CECL would be conducted with the formal application. Next slide. Uh, so staff recommends that council conduct a pre-screening and provide informal con- uh, comments regarding the applicant's request to rezone the properties at 4256 El Camino Real and not the address on this slide. Um, comments provided during the pre-screening process are not binding with the city or the applicant. Next slide please. This concludes my presentation and the applicant has a presentation as well. Thank you.
What's the, what's the timing for the applicant presentation?
No, 10 minutes.
Get that mic right up by your lips, please.
I'm in the ownership of a 4256 El Camino Real project. I'm a Palo Alto resident since 2006. I live in Baron Park. I'm a real estate developer. Um, I was the one that uh, I went through the entire process of entailing this project for hotel. Um, and uh, under the current circumstances that uh, we start reevaluating the site for potential residential. Um, and I think that the architect here, Jeff Potts, is going to go over the details more than technicalities. I just want to go over a few things. Uh, first of all, uh, and we understand the parking situation. Um, we secured enough parking with Palo Alto in um, that we can get next door. Uh, so that could be easily resolved uh, for the additional parking spaces that we need for the building. Um, I believe, we believe that uh, uh, we had the juncture that uh, I think it was even mentioned before this meeting uh, by some residents about the number of housing units that needs to be delivered, 6,086 by 2031. I think this could be a potentially a great project. I think there are very few left in City of Palo Alto to make the number. Um, and um, uh, would like to um, be here tonight just to hear from council. He understands the direction. Um, uh, it's, it's, it's a big decision for all of us. It's between a 96-room hotel and 120-unit residential development. And um, we look forward to listen to all your comments. Thank you.
Good he- good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Jeff Potts with SDG Architects. Uh, I'll be brief. I think staff did a great job of running through all the parameters of the project. Um, this is a unique opportunity to get back a housing site that likely would have been included in some of the housing programs had it not been entitled as a hotel. Um, go to the next slide, please. Again, uh, a prominent site along El Camino uh, with uh, plenty of transportation opportunities along that corridor. Um, this would be a six-story, 120-unit building, replacing a approved five-story, 96-unit hotel. Next slide. Um, just briefly, just to go through um, one of the comments uh, the staff made about the affordable housing. We have adjusted the affordable housing option and as we move forward, um, we would bring uh, that option forward that meets the 20% with seven very low-income units, eight low-income units and three moderate-income units. So 18 affordable units and 120 out of 120 total units. In addition, the uh, units themselves, you could go to the next slide, please. Um, uh, the balance of the units themselves will be affordable by design. I think something that's uh, that's sorely needed. Um, those, uh, balance of those units uh, average about 575 square feet. Um, so they'll be in an affordable uh, price range for, for renters in that area. Um, as you can see, again, on the uh, site slide, this is a uh, puzzle lift uh, style parking. There's 96 spaces there. There's four additional at-grade surface spaces uh, to take care of uh, required accessible parking and things of that nature. And as uh, Mircha mentioned, um, there have been discussions uh, with the adjacent property owners that have some very underutilized parking about potentially getting additional parking, uh, should it be necessary. Um, but we do have parking on-site for 100 cars um, with 120 smaller units on a transit corridor. This project um, would bring less traffic than a hotel project to the parcel itself and, and uh, far less traffic than the restaurant that was previously there, which the hotel was less than, than that uh, project as well. I mean, go to the next uh, slide. Uh, we do have um, many uh, forms of, of outdoor space for the units. There's private decks for uh, the units as well as a courtyard at level two and a roof uh, deck amenity at the roof. Um, that amenity is pulled back, you know, away from the neighbors on both the rear and the right side of the parcel to keep that uh, to a minimum um, as far as impact on the neighbors. You could go to the next slide. Actually, just go ahead and skip to the next one. Um, and then just uh, we were just providing here an overlay um, of the existing approved hotel against um, the proposed project. Um, it is at 79 foot 6 inches where uh, with the PHZ zone, the allowable height is uh, 91 feet. Um, it's at about 3.5 FAR where the PH zone allows uh, 4.0 FAR. And um, it's at the density for the PHZ zone. Uh, with that, we're here to listen to your comments and neighborhood comments and answer any questions you might have.
Do any councilmembers have any questions to be asked before we go to public comment? All right, how many speakers do we have for this?
We have 16 requests to speak and that is with a group of seven, one group of seven, a total 16.
Okay, so that group of seven could get uh, eight minutes and then two each for the others. And if you're repeating somebody else, it'd be great if you could just say that and make it less than two minutes because we'll be here a while.
Our first speaker speaking on behalf of a group of seven is Kevin C.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Loin, Vice Mayor Vinker and members of the City Council. My name is Kevin Chung. I'm the president of the Palo Alto Redwoods Homeowners Association, or the PAR HOA, a group which is comprised by many seats behind me here in the council chambers. And I'd like for my fellow residents uh, to identify selves by standing here in the chambers tonight. Thank you very much. I've been a 22-year resident of the complex since I was just wrapping up middle school at Jane Lethrop Stanford Middle School, or JLS, back in 2003. Sustainable urban design and transportation has always been a personal interest of mine, something that I've taken to heart even through adulthood, which led me to graduate in urban and regional planning from the Cornell University School of Architecture. Palo Alto has been famous for its quality of life and attachment to trees. And the PAR complex overall has a well-protected grove of many redwoods, 86 of them at last count, trees that are highly valued in today's times for their thick, tan-rich bark and moist shaded understories, many elements that can help reduce and resist the spread of wildfires, which are becoming all too common in our state. Our HOA makes sure that ample homeowner dues are being collected to maintain this natural feature in our complex environment. In addition to this, we also have been an early supplier of below-market rate units, BMR for short, to the overall housing count for the city of Palo Alto. According to our records, 12 units, or about 10% of our 117 total units are BMR, which all directly face the 4256 ECR property. Given this, we are a bit concerned of the irony here that may be at stake if existing BMR units will suffer negative impacts to their quality of life in the name of affordable housing. Other residents in the chambers here will address more particulars regarding these concerns related to environment and quality of life. We are very proud to have a community of close-knit neighbors that range from senior citizens aging in place to families with children and even young professionals like myself who find the complex a serene, yet well-lit environment that enables us to work from home in the very technology industries that are important to the city of Palo Alto and more importantly broadly to Silicon Valley. I work in the electrical vehicle industry, for instance, and I'm not responsible for the creation of the, the new police vehicle that you have there, but hopefully uh, for it to be charged. And other residents play a role in research in development related to science and engineering as well. Many of the individuals you see behind me have also lived in the complex for decades because we do believe in a long-term future in where we live. On my end, I personally want to share that given my academic background in urban planning, I fully support the need for more housing in Palo Alto and believe in increasing density and accommodating transit along strategic transportation corridors that the city has identified, like El Camino Real, which many residents will address. Furthermore, our community also understands that the state of California has mandated that this city do its part to meet regional housing goals. Residents like myself question and wonder, however, whether the rezoning of 4256 ECR from CS, Commercial Services, to PHZ, Planned Housing Zone, is the way to solve this critical housing issue. We are not here to deliver a NIMBY do-not-build approach to housing here in the city. And though my name and Karen have the same number of letters and they begin in the same letter, I hope I'm not representative uh, of that symbology. We would rather here like to bring up concerns about how this project is being considered relative to existing plans. And so on behalf of the HOA, our top major concerns currently are threefold. First, putting on our quantitative hats. We have recently observed that condo property values vary very much with the supply and demand in a manner quite differently than single-family homes, the latter of which are gaining in, in price at a faster quarterly rate. And on top of this, our property values are highly sensitive to nearby availability, especially since we have remained adjacent to an empty blighted lot in recent times with disposed objects like sofas that have not been properly removed. By adding 120 units right next to our door to an existing 117, we anticipate that our property values will further be harmed and you're worse yet to negatively affect comparative market values and future revenues for the city. Second, I understand that the city has already designated growth areas nearby to relieve the housing pressures brought on to us through uh, the state of California. to relieve the housing pressures brought on to us through the state of California. The El Camino Housing Focus Zone between Page Mill Road and Matadura Avenue and the Bay Shore Alma San Antonio or Bassa Priority Development Area, I understand were both selected because they offer strong transit access as well as infrastructure capacity for future housing. Both are located fairly close to the Palo Alto Redwoods, and in particular, that Bassa PDA only less than a mile away from us. And they were already planned for higher density as part of a coordinated growth strategy. So if these plans already exist, we are also concerned why zoning exceptions need to be made on this project in particular. Third, and lastly, the residents here are concerned that close to near total utilization and buildout of the adjacent property at what was mentioned here as a three-point-five-seven-to-one-floor-area ratio, a number calculated by built square feet out of the total lot square footage, is supposedly being described as the only way to assure affordability for both the developer and the city of Palo Alto. The proposal for a move toward near-complete lot coverage comes with real tangible trade-offs, reduced open space, loss of sunlight, and impacts to our neighborhood compatibility. We believe this these quality-of-life concerns must be weighed alongside housing goals, and the speakers that will follow me will further emphasize these concerns. So to conclude, our new HOA board is diverse in its perspectives and open to meeting with all parties, including the developer, to explore creative solutions. We want housing done right. But for the reasons that we and the other residents that follow will outline, advancing this rezoning in its current form, while nearby already-assigned housing growth is projected, may not be the most logical path forward. And with that, I'd like to thank you all for your time and consideration. And I would like to now hand over to Ann Mason to discuss zoning. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ann Mason, followed by Stephanie T.
I cede my time to Ann. Stephanie Trams. Forgive me, honorable counsel. I don't mean to waste anybody's time. I'm not sophisticated in the technicalities of building requirements. However, I've been living, I'm a homeowner condominium owner at Palo Alto Redwoods, forty-two fifty El Camino Real for over twenty years. And I am very concerned about the fact that this current application seems to be piggybacking off of the prior hotel application that was hotly contested by us and I think approved by the Architectural Review Board with numerous conditions and under pressure, also with reference to a hotel property in the vicinity. But when we come to residential housing, which of course we all favor building, the residences, the residential housing in the area are maximum four stories, mostly three stories. And just recently, the Country Inn motel property at forty twenty-three forty-five El Camino Real had approved plans for building townhouses, residential townhouses, of course, of three stories. There's nothing in the vicinity of this small parcel that comes anywhere close to six stories or five stories, and it will loom heavily over our entire property, and the balconies will look into our windows. In addition, we have a grave concern that there's no allowable space for any emergency vehicles or fire vehicles, et cetera. So I hope that the fact that there was a pre-existing approval for a hotel property back in two thousand and twenty won't be highly influential in the new consideration of this much larger and more imposing and taller structure. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Stephanie T., followed by Jeff L. M. M.
Forgive me. My name is Stephanie Trams, and I just spoke. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ann Mason, and I've lived in PAR since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm an engineer and I work in a large tech company in Silicon Valley. I, like many of my neighbors, work from home or have a home office. The vertical aspect ratio of any adjacent building plays a critical role in achieving optimal daylight lighting performance. The lack of daylight and natural light, which is the most contributory to human productivity, will impact my work performance. PAR has a hundred and seventeen units on two-point-six-seven acres, which equals forty-four units per acre. The proposed condo is one-twenty units on a parcel of point-six acres. That equals two hundred units per acre. That's nearly five times the density of PAR. The proposed residential seventy-nine-foot-tall building at thirty-one fifty ECR, which aligns with the recently revised zoning code, equals one forty-four units per acre. It sits on two-point-five-five-acre Zone CS, the former Fish Market site. Like forty-two fifty-six, it would like to have a FAR of four point oh. However, the dimension of the side facing ECR is two-hundred-and-seventy-six feet, while the forty-two fifty-six side facing ECR is only one-hundred-and-forty-seven feet. The vertical aspect ratio, or quote, "slenderness" of forty-two fifty-six will be twice that of thirty-one fifty. Aesthetically, the building will appear too tall and too narrow. The same applicant is in possession of a building permit for a five-story hotel, which doesn't expire until September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. One has to wonder why that project has only accomplished the demolition of an existing one-story restaurant after five years. This leaves an empty lot which blights South UCR since two thousand and twenty. The proposal on the agenda not only calls for building a condominium, but also calls for a zone change from CS to PHZ. Without the PHZ zone, both the height and the floor area ratio would be cut in half, back to what the CS zone and the existing hotel permit allows.
Your time is up. Our next speaker is Jeff L., followed by Charlene C.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing and council members. As you've heard already, this project will create many problems for our community. It also doesn't comply with our fifty-foot PC height rules, which are not clearly explained in the staff report. And it doesn't comply with our parking rules, and worse, it also fails to deliver adequately unaffordable housing. The staff report and the plans and the applicant, they all have different numbers for this. But many of the affordable units are supposed to be at the eighty percent AMI level or above. At that, at the eighty percent level, the monthly rent for a studio unit in this building can be twenty-five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars a month. These units will be about four-hundred-and-sixty square feet. That's just a little larger than a two-car garage. For that, for a studio that's small, you can get a better deal in Palo Alto right now. For example, the Union Plaza Apartments currently offer a larger studio for less rent. For a few dollars more, you can get a studio twenty percent larger over at Stanford Villa. Both of these offer amenities that are not proposed for this building. In other words, even though we're being told that the eighty percent AMI studios will be below market rate, they will not be below market rate. The proposed one-bedrooms have the same problem. At the eighty percent AMI level, their rent can be twenty-nine-hundred-and-three dollars a month. They're about six-hundred-and-thirty square feet. And guess what? Again, you can do better elsewhere. Right now, there's larger one-bedrooms available for about the same rent, more amenities. Examples are the Parker Palo Alto and Lane Court buildings. In short, this project is not really providing the level of affordable housing in addition to what we expect of projects, and yet that is a requirement for a PHZ project. You know, this project doesn't meet the basic threshold for a PHZ. We can do a lot better. I think that you, as the council and the Planning Commission, can say, look, we want affordable housing that's real, not, you know, fake. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Charlene C., followed by Gail C.
Hello, my name is Charlene Carlson. I've lived in Palo Alto for fifty-five years, most of my adult life, and I've lived in Palo Alto Redwoods for twenty-six, twenty-eight years. I'm sorry. I'm retired from a sustainability job, aging in place, and I own my home, which directly faces forty-two fifty-six El Camino Real, so I will be greatly impacted. I've stood here multiple times over the past eight years expressing my concerns about how buildings there will will impact us and whether they will be harmonious with our community. When I review these tall plans for tall housing with no stepping down of amassing away from the borders at all, really, what I see is crass thermal mass. And we already live in a in a highly paved area where we're looking at urban heat islands. I didn't work in sustainability, and this is just going to increase temperatures. So as our environment heats up, our willingness to tolerate it goes down. In Palo Alto Redwoods, we have a hundred and eighty-three trees overall, and eighty-six of those are large heritage redwood trees. Twenty-nine of those redwoods are located in the grove between between the two properties. And there are also four large redwoods on the forty-two fifty-six site, and together they form a canopy that protects us from that property. We're not sure what's going to happen to those trees because it's not clear in there. The proposed building is ninety-one feet tall, when you count all of it, and that towers over the majority of the redwoods immediately adjacent to it. We regularly feed and inspect our arborists, regularly inspect our trees, and we feed them and deep-root feed them and water them. The trees on forty-two fifty-six have benefited from the care we give ours because they haven't done much in that at all for years. And all redwoods need to be kept and carefully cared for. In summary, the proposal will impact the health of the canopy heritage trees and must be stopped. Please, no talk wall of crass mass.
Our next speaker is Gail C., followed by Julie B.
Good evening. My name is Gail Curtis. I've been a homeowner and resident at Palo Alto Redwoods since nineteen ninety-two. I'm here today on behalf of the park community to express our concern about the parking traffic and safety issues around the proposed project. This project aimed to take advantage of changes in zoning and restructure sections in order to achieve what they call viability for the project. And right now, we see that what makes a project viable for the developer will take its toll on our homes and our community. Many homeowners will lose privacy and the health of the many redwood trees is at risk. The ready access for service, delivery, and emergency vehicles will be compromised, and the safety of our children riding to school will be challenged. Every day at the Redwoods, there are many of delivery vehicles coming into our driveway, including Amazon, FedEx, and the postal service, and we have space to accommodate them. With the proposed projects, we don't see any support for this kind of activity. There's no parking in the ECR bike lane, and there's no loading zone in the plan. What happens when they all come at once, and they do? The problem for us is that a line of trucks along the ECR curb quickly creeps back up in our driveway and entrance. We'll see a pair, we also see an apparent lack of guest or visitor parking. Where will they park? We see that they, visitors there may come and take our parking spaces. So what we, the park community, would like for viability for us is to ready access to service, delivery, and emergency vehicles, support for homeowner privacy and living spaces, and safety for traffic vehicles and kids on bikes. Thank you, and I would like to turn over now to Julie Baskin for wrap-up.
Our next speaker is Julie B., followed by Nicolay M.
Hello, my name is Julie Baskin, and I've, Redwoods have been my home since nineteen eighty-eight. To recap, on behalf of our communities, two-hundred-and-fifty strong, we cannot stress enough our rejection of the current design as submitted today. While we're certainly mindful of the state mandates and the need for housing, the scope of this project is not reasonable. Among the many objections, we've identified the three most relevant, previously highlighted by my friends and neighbors, and they are, number one, at ninety-one feet high, this structure would lead to loss of privacy, light, and irreparable damage to our heritage trees. In fact, all but ten of the twenty-nine heritage trees in the Palo Alto Redwoods Grove facing the four-two-five-six property will be overshadowed by this building. Number two, the environmental impact concerns, the privacy, the safety, the parking, traffic congestion for our residents, specifically those of the thirty-three families that will look directly into the proposed building. And number three, our mutual goal is to ensure this development aligns with our community's needs and enhances the character of the neighborhood. You all have an open invitation to visit our community, understand our uniqueness, and experience why we are so passionate that this project does not proceed in its current form. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicolay M., followed by Jeffrey H.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nicolay Rose. My family and I are residents in Palo Alto Redwoods. And new development of forty-two fifty-six raises concerns for me as a father of two boys who back to school every day. We heard that Palo Alto resident who told us about the unsafe biking on Middle Field Road. You can imagine how El Camino is. It's getting better with protected bike lanes, but with this project, we have concerns of things getting way, way worse than right now. First, during the development of this high-density development, this will increase the traffic on El Camino Real, specifically around our area. And this becomes a serious public safety hazard for cyclists and pedestrians, making an already busy road even more dangerous for children on bikes. During the construction zone, during the construction period, heavy machinery, construction vehicles, material storage could obstruct kids' usual bike routes and make it extra dangerous. Then, lack of sufficient parking and infrastructure leads to additional vehicles being parked on neighborhood streets and creates more congestion and potentially blocking bike lanes and paths. Also, with this new development, it sets kind of a precedent for future projects. If this one is approved and goes forward like this, what will be the next one? This could mean a future Palo Alto where it's no longer safe or practical for kids to bike to school. I want to thank you for enabling our community to publicly raise our concerns to be heard and participate in sustainable development of our city of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey H., followed by Liz G.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I, I think my advice is to do less. I predict that the smaller the project becomes, the more the community will benefit. Preserve all the redwoods. Palo Alto is named for a redwood tree. Let's not desecrate the city by cutting them down. Respect the thirty-five and fifty-foot height limits from existing rules. Daylight plane rules exist for a very good reason. Only proceed with the full input and consent of the Palo Alto Redwoods Board. You know, they're the ones that are going to be most intensely impacted. Get them to join your design process and get them to agree. And finally, you, the developer, live in Barron Park, presumably in a single detached home in an R-one zone. Why don't you live in a tiny apartment of the type you want to build? And if anyone from the Palo Alto Redwoods wants to take my last forty-five seconds, you're welcome to.
Our next speaker is Liz G.
Hi, yes, as a former resident of a related Mayfield Place and right off of on page, off of Page Mill and El Camino Real, I really support to the city and the city council to please stop punishing working folk in this town for simply earning lower wages, yet who also work hard and deserve a good house to raise our families. Better quality multifamily housing for families of all sizes and incomes is essential to a strong town. We, as a community, have the responsibility to shelter equitably our own. When we don't, we lose the quality of life, volunteerism, community involvement that makes a town vibrant and thrive. This is El Camino Real project, not a deeply embedded R-one zone in old Palo Alto. This geographic area is rich in its potentiality for good quality housing. I support it all the way. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on study session item one.
Okay, thank you. Let's come back to the dais, and we will have comments from council members. Councilmember Burke?
Okay. So first, I wanted to raise a question on whether there the redwoods that are on the current site are, are, on this proposed site would be removed. Do we have any sense of that?
The application was not clear in that regard. Would you like to ask the applicant?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I did, I did fail to touch on the trees. The trees, there would be no change in what was going to be removed from the hotel site. In fact, because there's no underground garage being dug next to the redwood trees, they're going to be in a better position to maintain their health.
Okay, thank you. And then, I was unclear, this probably more for staff, but we had in the presentations two different north elevation images. One that shows a significant step down that I assume goes to the red, the redwood development, and the other that does not. And so I wasn't clear on whether there, the project is proposing that step down or not.
The elevations with the step down that you were holding up a minute ago is the entitled hotel project that was approved a few years ago. Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I think others may comment on that, but I think that's an important concern is to have a step down similar to what was there on the hotel project. The developer made a number of assertions that this, this would be lower traffic impact than the, the hotel project and lower than the previous retail use. The staff have any understanding of, of whether those are supported statements?
We would analyze the project based on the standard I T E trip generation rates, but unfortunately, I don't know off the top of my head if multifamily is less than hotel or restaurant.
Okay, thanks. And how does the proposal stand up against our standard parking requirements?
As stated in the presentation, the project is proposing one hundred parking spaces and a hundred and thirty or a hundred and twenty-five would be required, depending on if we're looking at the standard or the housing incentive program development standards.
And they said that they have a, an agreement with an adjacent property for some off-site parking. Is that included in that analysis, or is that part of how they're proposing to bridge the, the deficit?
That is new information to staff. There is a hundred spaces shown in the garage.
Okay, thanks. I did want to note there was this issue of affordability, and particularly affordability of the deed-restricted projects. And as we saw on the project on the corner of El Camino and Page Mill, the calculation for affordability is based upon number of bedrooms, not the size of the unit. So if you have a microunit, and this is somewhere in between, but five hundred and something square feet of, of a studio, isn't it correct that, that the, the dollar amount for what is the, meets the affordability threshold for a given, say, eighty percent affordability is the same for a one-thousand-square-foot studio as it is for a five-hundred-square-foot studio? Is that correct? It's not based on square footage, it's based on number of bedrooms?
Correct. And I'll note for that project that you referenced at Page Mill and El Camino, that was at a hundred and twenty percent AMI, and this would have to average out at eighty percent AMI. Hearing the public speaker's comments, we have not done that analysis, but we do understand that concern about whether deed-restricted units are achieving that of, is, is the market rate equal to the deed-restricted rate? And so that's something that we will take a look at. It does become a tighter calculation for the smaller units as you are referencing.
And do we have any ability to change our formula for deed-restricted affordable housing to incorporate the size of the unit rather than just the number of bedrooms?
So I'd have to take a look. I do think that the city does have, we, we established our inclusionary requirements, and so we could take a look and see what sort of authorities exist for us to make some refinements to that. I will note with the planned home zoning application that's before you, we've, in essence, pre-negotiated the inclusionary requirements for these types of projects. But outside of the zoning code changes, the council could consider as a public benefit whether some refinement to that might be considered.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Maker?
Thank you. I want to thank all the residents that took the time to come here tonight and provide comment. And also the thoughtfulness of your comments in that you didn't repeat each other. You divided it up and gave us different perspectives. It was very helpful to hear from you. And I want to thank the applicants for coming forward with a housing project. It is sorely needed, and El Camino Real is a, a, an excellent place to do it. So it's now we have a tough job of trying to balance all these interests and coming up with something that works for our city writ large. You know, it's interesting. You had this hotel permitted, and so it, I'm curious about some of the increased impacts of the housing project, knowing that you have the, the hotel permitted now. One of the things following up on Councilmember Burke's questions about the, the redwood trees. You know, you mentioned that there won't be the underground garage and that that's perhaps better for the trees. At this point, has any arborist, private or city or anyone looked at this question? Because the light, there'll be light issues, there'll be more light issues with a bigger building perhaps. Redwoods, as I understand it from a lay perspective, do not have deep roots, so perhaps it's different than others. Has a professional analyzed, first of all, the absolute impact and then the relative impact of the two proposed projects?
So is that a question to staff then?
I don't know. Yes, I'll start with you.
I'll defer to Ms. Callis, but I'll, maybe I'll just quickly summarize. At, at this stage, we have not done that level, level of analysis. This is a different design project. It's much taller. So these are the types of things that we would want to study in a formal application. Did I miss anything?
Correct, yeah, it definitely would have been analyzed as a, or it was analyzed as a part of the hotel project, but we would need to reanalyze to study this project in particular.
Yeah, and that is what I suspect is we're a little too early, but I do think that some of the, the devil's in the details on this one with the two different projects. I don't know if the applicant has had any arborist analyze the potential impact of this different new project. If so, Mr. Mayor, is it all right if you?
Okay.
Thank you.
If I'm, yeah, the short answer is that we have an arborist report on the hotel, which is on the ground parking, so we look at that impact at that time, which we can, I mean, we can provide it to planning for review. We have not done one for this one today. This was just a study session, but if we move forward, of course, we will do that. But the idea is to completely preserve the redwoods at the end of the day.
Well, thank you, because, you know, redwoods in particular, I don't know how long-lived these ones are that are there, but, you know, they are very special trees and harder to replace. I don't know what, you know, so if they're all wanting to be preserved, I think that's an important thing to make sure we get right. I have a question that may also be for the applicant, if that's okay. Or maybe staff knows. So I just want to confirm the, the open space at a hundred and thirty square foot per unit instead of a hundred and fifty. I see on the roof that there's a terrace, a shared terrace, but it doesn't look like a green roof. Is that correct? Or has there been any thought or discussion around having a green roof as opposed to a terrace up there?
Does the applicant want to respond to that?
Yeah, the intention for the roof deck would be that it's a usable outdoor space. It would incorporate some greenery as well as other features, seating, things like that. It hasn't been, you know, designed at, at this point, as we're just getting through the, you know, pre-screening or.
So if it's, oh, so then is that included in the one hundred and thirty square foot per unit of open space, the terrace area or not? How does that work?
Yes, that was included in that.
All right, so that's not any additional gain unless, okay. Then I'm, I'm going to leave it at that for now. I have a couple of questions, but they'll use more than my ten seconds.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few questions. One of my, one of my concerns was there's currently no loading space. Does that also include no space for ride share as well?
Correct.
Okay, now those, I can't remember our code. Do we treat those separately or is a loading zone for package deliveries the same as ride share?
Our code would treat the ones, loading zone as able to serve both purposes.
Okay, so yeah, that's a concern, need to be addressed. Why did the PTC not recommend this site in the ECR retail node map?
Well, see, I don't know for sure, but my guess is it was an entitled project and probably thought to believe, it was believed that it would develop as a hotel and therefore not likely to turn over.
Okay. But there was no, was there any actual discussion of it at that PTC meeting that you can recall?
So I, I'd have to review the, the record.
Okay, I'd be curious. So for the entitled hotel, what is the, I know it's five stories. What is the exact height of that?
I can get that information, but I'll need to look it up.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Then, one question of the applicant through the chair, if that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you. During your presentation, you mentioned that the market rate units are affordable by design. Can you speak to the, what your estimated rental, because these are rental units, correct?
Correct.
What the rent would be for, for a one-bedroom?
I, I can't, I can't really speak to the, the rent on a project that would be, you know, four years at a minimum in the making.
Okay.
At this moment, but, but typically a smaller apartment of the same bedroom count is less expensive to rent, and so you, you know, get some smaller apartments mixed in with a lot of the larger ones that were mentioned earlier, and you get a, a value in the rent there.
Okay, because you spoke to it being affordable by design. I, I had hoped that had meant that a little more specificity to it, but I understand we are, we're far out. Okay, thank you. Yeah, overall, I share the concerns of council members who have, who have already spoke regarding protections of the redwood trees. That's essential. Glad to hear that the applicant is also committed to protecting those. I agree with what Vice Mayor said. This is a unique, this is a unique spot, and redwood trees can be unique trees. And so that's going to be a, a big concern of mine moving forward. I think there is a lot of good with this project, a lot of bad, a few thoughts. We have a huge need for more housing, especially rental units. So anytime apartments are being proposed, I think that's a, that's an exciting thing. Generally, this is a good location as it is a PC-zoned area. There's nothing currently existing on the lot. So that means no displacement of current residents, which is always a, a big win. And as we know, El Camino Real is a key location for, for new housing, and we are trying to expand housing opportunities there as we move forward. And ultimately, I'd much rather this be housing than a hotel. So that's a nice win there as well. But of course, there is, there is a lot of bad things about this project. I think the size and the mass of the building is out of character for the surrounding buildings. It's going to tower over the neighboring communities of, of Palo Alto. Redwoods, I think something that we need to think more of as a council and as a city is what do we, when we have made all these changes in zoning and we've identified housing element sites and we've created the El Camino Real focus area, and we're working on it on San Antonio and even expanding it on El Camino, that's all great, and I think that's going to help us hopefully meet our, our arena targets. But when we then get these, these kind of, these, these very kind of site-specific projects that are in areas that haven't been further studied and, and expanded in the zoning, that seems very unfair to the surrounding residents and just creates, in my mind, a lot more kind of chaos and uncertainty in our grander housing strategy. So I think that's something that we need to consider, but again, that means we, we want to take advantage when good housing projects move, at least come forward. That might be a little out of the norm or a little beyond the base zoning. This is seeming quite a bit of a, a reach there. Of course, my big non-starter was we were not hitting the, the affordability requirements. So glad to hear that that is being addressed, but I, I'll wait and see the final kind of, what the final numbers look there. The underparking also an issue for that area because it's not quite close enough, I think, to good public transit that'll be able to address that. Well, we got good public transit there, but at least not close enough to, to Caltrain. The no retail use is, is concerning. Curious, kind of get more thoughts from the, the PTC if that, if that is an opportunity. And then, yeah, overall, just the lack of step backs, the lack of facade modulation, the encroachment into, into the daylight plane for, especially for, for Palo Alto redwoods. I think there's going to be, if this, this moves forward in addition to preserving those redwoods, a lot of additional privacy screenings to be able to protect those units that are, that are facing it. So I think there's a, but again, glad to see that we're, that we're trying to get rental units there over, over hotel space, but there's definitely some, some work to be done. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate the residents for coming out. Speaking at these meetings is really hard, and you were organized, and I appreciate that. I'm also glad this is coming before us because we do need to end the blight on that lot, and I think it's a great opportunity to get more housing done. So as a first comment, I think three-point-five-seven F A R is basically fine. That's within the realm of what we allow in the housing incentive program for a housing element site. And we would, under any ordinary circumstance, really consider an empty lot to be a housing element opportunity site. But we probably just could not given the previous hotel application. So we're really just in the ballpark of what we would allow. But my question for the applicant is how we can handle the massing and what ideas you have considered about moving that around? So any thoughts and trade-offs on why the setbacks are the way they are? Or whether you consider putting more massing closer to El Camino? And just that design perspective would be appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously lots and lots of considerations that, that go into laying these things out. As you were, could see, and as was noted by staff, you know, the lot coverage is, is already fairly high. You know, we have requirements for some setbacks around the building for fire and safety and things like that. I mean, the way to achieve the F A R that we're at and, and, you know, provide more privacy and more step backs and things like that is taller on the El Camino side. And I, you know, don't know that, that that's really, you know, any place that, that anybody really wants to go. So it's just, it's a trade-off of, you know, getting that F A R, getting the number of units that makes a viable project versus, you know, trying to, you know, work. you know, work with the neighbors and and, you know, the various requests for, you know, more space, more light, more buffer. So certainly those things can be further explored, you know, if the applicant chooses to move forward after the the council's feedback.
The massing along El Camino has come up in the context of other discretionary zoning decisions, and I'd be curious if any other council members have thoughts on what would be appropriate for this project. But yes, I realize that height would be shifted around. I'm sure any additional setback would be really appreciated by the residents, and I would want to see if any additional setback really materially makes a difference for the viability of the redwood trees at the border of the lot. Just a couple of their comments. Parking offsite is not ideal. I would love to have some sort of assurance that that offsite parking is actually durable. It is sort of contractually set in some long term fashion. If you are going to claim that it is a sort of key benefit that you are associating with the project. We'd want to understand how that would actually work longer term. I think the lack of retail, of course, is regrettable. And maybe just as one last question for the applicant. Is the intention to just totally abandon the hotel entitlement and that that is just not desired or viable or going to happen from here?
Well, that's a that's a great question, and this is really the key moment for that decision to be made. As somebody noted, the hotel is permitted. It is shown already. It's on its final extension. And so that decision as to whether there's going to be a hotel built or there are some, you know, semblance of, you know, of thought that that a housing project could be built. It would be, you know, it's a big step for the property owner, obviously, to abandon entitlement that they spent four years and countless hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, perfecting. You know, the hotel, obviously, uses have diminished due to COVID and and other things. And so, you know, the vacancy rates are probably higher in Palo Alto than you want it to be. But yeah, that's that's kind of the key. We're we're at the crossroads. I'm not sure how it stands for that question.
Okay, thank you. And those are my comments.
Okay, Councilmember Rektal.
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank the applicant for the project. We need a lot of housing in Palo Alto, and this is a lot of housing. The challenge is to the city council here is we want to balance both housing production with the impact to the nearby neighbors. And I think that this proposal doesn't give enough attention to the impact to the nearby neighbors. I think we're swinging too much the maximizing the production. So I'm really glad about the redwoods. I think that's a that has to be maintained. And make sure that the setback is enough that they're not damaged during construction. That's critical. We need some type of step back to minimize the impact to the nearby neighbors on the back. We also need privacy measures. We don't want windows facing other windows. We want some type of privacy thoughts. I'm also some of the other council members mentioned durable parking. I'm kind of skeptical that external parking would be durable. That would have to be really addressed. Loaded zones between DoorDash and Uber, there's such a demand for loading zones. And if you don't have them, people just double park and make traffic impact. So we have to have enough loading zones. I'm also skeptical of the micro units. They're affordable, but there is a value there. And it bothers me. It seems like we're gaming the system by having these micro units that have low rent, but actually pretty high per square foot rents. And so that kind of bothers me. Also, retail preservation. This does require some retail. You don't have it. I personally would be willing to waive that retail if you could modify the design to have less impact on the neighbors. I think that's more important to the community than having the retailer particular location. Overall, I mean, this is a great spot for housing. I'd like to see housing here. I just think the design needs to be tweaked a bit. Thank you.
Okay, I'll weigh in and try not to repeat other things. I think you just answered my first question. Or you're steering away to answering it, which is if you don't do housing, are you going to do the hotel or you're going to put the land up for sale? So I guess that's as far as you can go tonight. You want to address it, go ahead.
Yes, we will have to discuss internally. And then I think that it's going to be in a valuation done. I think that we need to take every single step into the consideration that council presented today, see if we can make something feasible and, you know. If not, it could be either way. We have another six months' extension on the on the permit, and then it might turn out that we will wait for the next round of increased zoning and residential and just kind of sit on it.
Wait for what was that?
We potentially, depending on the outcome of our analysis and the council decision on direction, we might just decide to pause the hotel and just sit on it.
Okay, so the the reason I wanted to ask that is because the core core of my analysis in terms of the process here is that you there are a number, there are a number of things that you can do in this to to get this thing done. You can go with the hotel that's approved. There's the HIP program we created in the city to be beneficial beneficial to builders. But you don't want to do that. And then the state created a whole law, a state density bonus to be liberal to developers, and you don't want to do that. So it's you. You're sort of wanting the best of each one of these things as I as I see it, which is what's put into this PHC instead of the HIP or the density bonus. And at some point here, it's I think you're hearing is that there has to be some reasonable compromise and flexibility since you're asking for more than the law allows in in terms of our own or or the state. And what we're seeing here is just it's just not there yet, I think, is what I'm hearing from from colleagues. And the idea of these BMR units that you say that, you know, you don't know what the rents are going to be. Well, somebody does because you did a pro forma on the rent. The rents are going to be for the next twenty years, so you can justify the building. So I find that sort of evasive. I can I share the concern that these affordable by design are really not that. And I have two tenure issues. I think we could, in this zoning directorate, require that parking to be permanent for the life of the ownership of the building. So it would not just be where we're going to get parking for six months, and then we're going to take it out. Is that right? Yeah.
Yes, we, if there was any offsite parking associated with the development, zoning code has some requirements for that. And in every instance, we would require that there's that it runs with the life of the project or some other long term use. It wouldn't be a short term feature.
Right. And the second duration issue is the BMR. What would that have been negotiated? Or can we set what we want for that?
We would probably default to our code as the starting place. And I actually just don't know off the top of my head what that standard is, but it's likely better than fifty years.
Okay. So, yeah, we're coming up with a a number of similar things here, the terms of the the massing and the overall size and just kind of the respect of of the neighbors where I think that there could be some moves. So I would suggest that if you want to make moves, as you've heard, then continue it. And otherwise, maybe you're going to just gonna wait. So that would be that would be my service summary comments. Councilmember Bert?
Yeah, I just had I did a lot of questions first round. I want to just make a few quick comments. First, like Councilmember Rektal, I'd be open to waiving the retail component in exchange for addressing some of the other issues, step down at the rear. But also, we didn't discuss what we've had as a design principle, Elswan El Camino, which is a setback for that top floor, so that the look and feel of El Camino is five stories, not six, even though you get the bulk of the square footage of that sixth floor. And that that step back provides some open space for tenants as well. And the mechanical, again, looked like it was tentatively positioned close to the edge. We don't want that above a seventy nine foot. What really looks like a seventh floor. So that has to be set back, and that may conflict with your some ideal aspects of your your top floor open space. But but when we're moving up to these greater heights in the community, we don't want towering buildings that feel like they're they're really more out of the scale with the community than need be. And then lastly, on the loading space, these days between package delivery, food delivery, and ride hailing, this has become an extremely important part of any development. And I don't know how many spaces, but I would certainly think that one is too few. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay, thank you to all. And that is the end of this item. Next up.
Okay, Mayor. Mayor, we'll go ahead and get started, if you don't mind. Okay, so so again, Jonathan Lay, Director for Planning Development Services. They have Stephen Switzer here, planner with our department, who's going to present this project.
Well, good evening. Project Planner Stephen Switzer here. Let's take a trip to three thirty two Forest Avenue. This is a pre-screening. Next slide, please. For the subject property, as noted in the earlier presentation, pre-screenings are required for legislative changes such as rezonings. This allows council to provide some early feedback on conceptual projects. The plans that are provided are preliminary, and no formal decisions are being requested on the conceptual project. As noted on the slide, council members are expected to refrain from forming firm opinions as the proposal may return for future formal action with an application. Now on to the conceptual project. Next slide, please. Thanks. This is a pre-screening to rezone a current multiple family in RM forty property to a planned home zoning that would allow for an eighty two rental unit building that would be eight stories in height with below and at grade parking. Next slide, please. Just to orient ourselves here, the project's location is near downtown. It is also located within the south of Forest area coordinated area plan, SOFA one cap. Highlighted on the slide as well as in the staff report are some surrounding housing projects. And just going through that short list of four here, we have three forty five Forest Avenue with eighty five units. At number two, we have three sixty five Forest Avenue with seventeen units. We have number three, which is three sixty Forest Avenue Casa Real with forty units and seven oh seven Bryant Street with nineteen units. And not shown on the screen, but there is a thirty unit condominium development to the south of the or rear of the project site. Moving along. Can briefly go over some of the scale and design elements through the site plan here. The height proposed is eighty five feet versus a fifty foot requirement. In the zoning code, the lot coverage would be eighty seven percent versus a forty five percent floor area would be at a four point two one to a one ratio, where a one to one ratio would be allowed by the underlying zoning. Density would be a hundred and forty three dwelling units per acre, where forty dwelling units per acre would typically be allowed. Parking, as noted before, would be underground and at grade. Required parking spaces would be a hundred and thirty seven proposed in the plans is a hundred and ten. It is noted in the plans that there are no bicycle parking, but typically that would be required at eighty two spaces. And there is indicated in the application materials, as well as on the slide here, a shared open space component with the adjacent property at Casa Real. And just to note that is under common ownership. Just to go through some of these conceptual elevations here, on the left hand side, we have the fronting facade on Forest Avenue. To the south would be the rear. Next slide. We would have our eastern elevation, so this would be facing the interior shared open space. And on the next slide will be the western elevation facing seven oh seven Bryant Street. And moving along to the next slide, to kind of guide the conversation tonight, we have some key considerations. So parking spaces and services. The property, as noted before, is providing a hundred and ten spaces where a hundred and thirty seven would typically be required. It is within a half mile of California Avenue. Excuse me, the university Caltrain station downtown. So that would afford it reduced parking requirements with Assembly Bill twenty ninety seven. The parking would be at grade as well as underground. Only residential uses are currently being proposed. And as noted, no bicycle parking is indicated on the plans, but typically eighty two spaces would be required. Also, there is a potential for a through lot connection, potentially through the connecting Forest to Homerav. The applicant has indicated that there's not an interest for that. Moving to some historic considerations. There are two evaluations on file for the property. So we have one that was prepared in two thousand with the city's Danza Moore survey update. And another one that was provided in two thousand and four at the applicant's expense. Two of those evaluations offer conflicting eligibility statuses for the historic property or historic eligibility, should I say. As noted in the staff report, if a formal application were to be received, staff would conduct a peer review of the applicant-prepared survey and find that evaluation. Housing and affordability. Currently, the application is meeting the twenty percent of the units at eighty percent adjusted median income AMI for PHC projects. There are existing units on the site, so it's sixteen existing units, and there are some protections and benefits, if you will, afforded to existing renters, not only at the state level, but at our local level with our chapter nine point six eight, offering some relocation assistance. And if we're speaking towards some special requirements for PHCs, we have a transitional height. So currently being proposed is an eighty five foot building. I believe it's up to ninety three feet with the parapet. And typically would be required to be fifty feet in height. And on to a daylight plane, as noted in the staff report and attachment B, PHC special requirements provide that typical daylight plane restrictions are comparable to the most restrictive of budding zoning district. And in this case, that would be RM thirty. That would typically require a forty five degree angle daylight plane. But the municipal code does allow for some sites that are seventy feet or wider in width to not have daylight planes. And we move along to the next slide. Some considerations for SEQA. So since this is a preliminary review, there are no required SEQA California Environment Quality Action for the project or conceptual project, should I say. And can move on to the next slide. Can read into the record here, recommended motion for council that council conduct a pre-screening and provide some council conduct a pre-screening and provide some informal comments regarding the applicant's requests to rezone the property at three thirty two Forest Avenue from RM forty to a planned home zoning. And in some closing remarks here, I just wanted to note that the applicant will have a presentation. And since the posting of the agenda and staff report, staff has received multiple public comments on the item, and those have been forwarded to councils review. And I can entertain any further questions.
Any additional questions from staff, from council for staff? And any council members have immediate questions for staff? Otherwise, we can go to the applicant and we can get my mic fixed. Applicant?
Ten minutes, correct?
Yes. Mayor, we'll keep you on the timer. Thanks.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm delighted to speak on behalf of my family and to introduce our downtown one hundred percent housing project, which we're calling Forest Commons. There we go. We believe the project would be a great addition to Palo Alto and hope that after our presentation, you will agree to. Next slide, please. A little about us and our team. My family are multi-generational Palo Alto residents coming up on fifty years and living in Palo Alto. We've actually owned this particular property on Forest Avenue and the neighboring Casa Real property for over twenty five years. We are experienced housing operators and our office is only a few blocks from here. The architect we selected, Rob Steinberg, is also a Palo Alto resident and designer of several buildings that we know and love in Palo Alto. Dave Hopkins and Marissa Riley are with Saris Regis, our very experienced development advisors. Best yet, Dave also grew up in Palo Alto. Next slide, please. And now on to the project. Three thirty two Forest Avenue is located in the perfect place to create transit-oriented pedestrian-friendly housing. To give you an idea of the location, it is about one block northeast of City Hall along Forest Avenue. This site sits at the terminus of Gilman Street and Forest Avenue. As shown in this slide, at this unique intersection, we have significant multifamily buildings already. Landing Chateau, three sixty five Forest and Casa Real, all in the same corner. And in a way, this project would complete the corner. Next slide, please. Zooming in closer on the site itself, we can see it in its current layout. You may notice that for a downtown Palo Alto site, it is unusually big and without much currently there, which is not something that you hear every day. There's a small sixteen unit building, a few freestanding carports, and a large gravel lot. The low-rise building is older, but is not historic, as confirmed by the submitted report created by the city's land use consultant of choice, Page and Turnbull. Looking towards the property line, you can see that there's an amazing living wall of trees, including two magnificent redwood trees standing over one hundred feet tall that provide some natural screening. Even at this early design stage, we've brought on an arborist to work alongside our architect to make sure that the trees are protected and continue to thrive. Finally, I'd like to point out that the large but simple grounds of Casa Real would integrate into the Forest Commons and allow for some spectacular, healthy outdoor spaces, which we'll highlight later. Next slide, please. Moving out from the site, we can see just how incredible the location is when thinking about it from a car-not-required standpoint. The site sits well within one half mile of the University Avenue Caltrain Station and is only steps away from all the great things that downtown Palo Alto has to offer. Transportation, restaurants, culture, everything is walkable. It's all right there, and we're excited that we could give more people the chance to enjoy Palo Alto's lively downtown. Next slide, please. And now for the building. Sorry, those are all the things you can do downtown, or a few. Next slide, please. And now for the building. Rob's designed an incredible building with lots of natural light and thoughtful design, which acknowledges Casa Real as its sister building. Next slide, please. Additionally, the shared outdoor space is substantial, offering a healthy and mindful environment for residents to work, relax, gather, or play. Next slide. So why the PhD process? Well, it was not an easy decision for us, and we did not make it lightly, but there are a few reasons. Firstly, this sofa area is not currently part of either a focus area or the downtown housing study area, and as such, no material number of housing units can be added under its current zoning. By way of example, nearly a decade ago, we looked at increasing density here. Under the current zoning, we would only have been able to add eight additional units. And so we did nothing. Now, to make this vision of Forest Commons possible, we do require the same things that other PhD developments have received, which are all outlined in the staff report. With that said, the building as designed does conform to side and rear setbacks with our neighbors, and by utilizing the Casa Real grounds, we exceed open space requirements for downtown Palo Alto site. Next slide, please. Forest Commons would provide many important benefits to the community. To start, this development would transform one of the only sizable downtown parcels into eighty two family-friendly units. This project would also demonstrate that impactful transit-oriented infill development is possible in Palo Alto. And as a result of this project, sixteen units would be made affordable in perpetuity, giving groups such as our local teachers, police officers and firefighters and other community members the opportunity to walk to work. The project will commit to meet both long-term and short-term bicycle parking requirements and include a bike maintenance area to support our car-free residents. However, we're also realists, and we understand that some residents will want to have a car, no matter how convenient the location. In order to house these cars in our building and keep them off the neighborhood streets, we plan to provide an onsite parking space for every single unit created. This is real parking, no lifts, no puzzlers, no stackers. We're talking about real parking that people can use. And finally, we'd like to highlight the fact that Forest Commons would achieve about twenty five percent of the city housing elements stated goal for transit-oriented units, all within one site. We know that this is a pre-screening meeting and that there will be no vote tonight. Our hope is that after seeing this project and hearing about what it can bring to Palo Alto, that we do receive your enthusiastic support as we work with you to move this unique and impactful project forward. And with that, I'll now hand it over to our architect, Rob Steinberg, to share some thoughts on the building and its design concept. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to begin by sharing my perspective of our project, both as an architect and as a resident of the neighborhood for the last forty five years. Next, please. On this slide, Forest Avenue is running up and down on the screen, and Gilman is running left to right, currently at dead ends and no parking lot at our site. As you can see, three of the four corners are occupied by residential buildings that range from sixty to eighty feet high. Our proposal is to complete the fourth corner at this intersection with the addition of a building that matches the scale of the other three corners. Next, please. Our vision for the site is one of an integrated collection of old and new buildings and gardens. There are three components to the proposal. A is the landmark nineteen twenties Casa Real, an elegant, timeless structure that sets a tone for our proposal. B is a new residential building, but not a copy of Casa Real, but a sibling of Casa Real. And C is a significant open space that will be shared by both residents of Casa Real and the new building. Next, please. So this is a photograph of that open space as it exists today, and you could see the scale of some of the existing trees around the perimeter that are close to a hundred feet high. On the upper right sketch is an early idea illustrating how the new resident community room for both buildings could connect the indoors and the outdoors together. Imagine residents living in the heart of downtown with the benefit of extensive outdoor opportunities like this. That's a rare thing. Next, please. Casa Real is an example of Palo Alto's unique architectural heritage. The new building, which takes its cues from Casa Real, will be a sustainable, contemporary building that celebrates its moment in time. Utilizing a decorative vertical element, Casa Real breaks down the massing of the building. It highlights where the entry is, and it gives variety to the way the building meets the sky. The sketches on the right illustrate how we're using a similar design strategy for the new building by using a vertical element to modulate the scale, lead the visitor to the entry, and give variety to the top of the building. Next, please. Sculpting the massing of the building gracefully to transition to adjacent buildings will be critical to the new building's success. We understand this. That's going to take some work. Fortunately, we're starting with a substantial green screen of mature trees, and we can certainly augment that, but we also want to shape our new building to respond to the adjacencies. On the left sketch, we want to match the height of Casa Real with the new building so that we've got a unified composition, and we're emphasizing the entrance, how you get into the building. On the right, transitioning to neighborhood buildings, the mass will need to express a finer grain of articulation. Remembering though, the project needs to be financially viable to go forward. Next, please. Following in the best tradition of Palo Alto's architectural heritage, we want the new building to not only demonstrate design excellence in its massing, but also through the use of materials and detailing. Next, please. On a personal note, when the Gionato, excuse me, Givano family first approached me about this site, I was a little surprised. I was a little surprised to see that behind that little building on three three two Forest, there was a huge, large gravel lot with direct adjacency to extensive green space right in the middle of our downtown. They asked me to design a sister building to their cherished Casa Real, something that we could all be proud of, and I'm here tonight to tell you I'm ready to do that. We look forward to working with the city, working with our neighbors, and let's get some meaningful housing built in downtown Palo Alto. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're ready to go to public comment on this item.
We have eight requests to speak.
Stay with the two minutes that we did with the last item.
Our first speaker is Ignacio Diem.
Hi, my name is Ignacio. I've been more than ten years resident in downtown Palo Alto. I live in seven oh seven Bryant, the little building that you could see behind this massive building that is being built with my wife and three children. I'm also a board member of the HOA of that building. I've been for the last five years. In the last five years, I was president. And as you can see, we're going to get a massive building. You've received a lot of emails from our neighbors. We're going to get like a massive concrete wall in front of us. And we're like a two, three story building, and we're going to get this massive eight-story building. So that's a big concern. We believe there is like zoning regulations to protect a lot of things. This item we're discussing and the previous one we discussed before this one, I think is the same, the same problem. There is no gradual transition from eight-story to two or three. This is just a massive wall for us. And then that's a big, that's a big problem for like the character that, you know, the zoning regulation tried to protect. I think we're RM thirty, this lot is RM forty. And Steve in his presentation has a nice table that he has shared, and some of the numbers are really concerning. Like the density is like four hundred twenty one percent of what it should be. The height is eighty five feet compared to forty or fifty. The use of the lot is eighty seven instead of forty five. And then the floor area is three hundred fifty percent of what it should be. So it's a massive use of the land. So we believe that they should, they have these three lots there. They have three fifty, they have three thirty two and three sixty. We believe they should build, but we believe it should be with more common sense. So our request to you is that, yes, let's build more housing for Palo Alto, but let's try to do it in a way that doesn't affect our, you know, the surrounding, the surrounding buildings as much. In the picture, you could only see the tall building next to it, but on the other side, there's a lot of small buildings, so you will see other neighbors here talking all those. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fred K, followed by Judith S.
I'm Fred Kohler. I'm a twenty one year resident of three fifteen Homer. I wanted to reemphasize that the attachment A only showed this project encompassing three thirty two Homer, and the gravel lot of three fifty Homer is actually part of it, even though it wasn't identified on that. So as a result of that, we have two buildings that are adjoining, directly adjoining the proposed building, three fifteen Homer and seven oh seven Bryant. So you have a eight-story building built out to ten feet within the property, within the property line of three fifteen Homer and seven oh seven Bryant. Additionally, you know, I think that would raise serious daylight plane issues that would need to be resolved. And I think, you know, many of us realize that comparing this to the current zoning is probably not practical, and you couldn't build a building there. But there was very little analysis of how this proposal would compare to what the state would require. And, you know, if this building is found unreasonable, you know, they could well come back and build something much beyond Palo Alto's current zoning of RM forty, but but still be within the state law. So I think there needs to be more analysis before you come to any serious conclusions on this, on this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Judith S, followed by David S.
You excuse me, I'm not a speaker. And so I brought my son to help me. I'm a resident of seven oh seven Bryant for about fifteen years. I love it. And right next to where I look out are those redwood trees. And I was there about ten years, or five years ago, when the builder, the owner of that property, tried to cut those trees down. And I don't know if it's the same owner, but he was from New York City. I was on the board then. Anyway. I'm, I just love that where I am. I love every, but if there's another building that comes up ten floors, I'm looking out at nothing but walls. I don't mind a couple of floors maybe, but it's ridiculous for our wonderful condo to be like that. Okay, I'm going to let David talk.
Hi, I grew up in Palo Alto, too. I guess just from visiting her, her front yard is the, right now it's a two-story building. And the concern is looking out at an eight-story building, which is right now just a straight wall without any kind of setbacks and looking directly into a parking garage at this point. So I guess the big concern is property values are going to go down. And we've already talked to a real estate agent who said that now that's been proposed, her condo prices have been kind of slashed as far as values. So that's the biggest concern. And then, of course, of course, noise for working from home or seniors who are home all the time. It's going to be three years of jackhammering and bulldozing and things like that.
Most of our people and seniors that live there.
So thank you.
Our next speaker is Rob L.
We're having a technicality here. I used to be able to bring pictures and I, on a thumb drive, and now that's vetoed. And now it's emailed, which I emailed because I talked to Jonathan about it. Maybe Jonathan will let them show the pictures. It's nothing gory. It's a we can load that up. So I also have been biking around Palo Alto for more than sixty five years. And one of my favorite pathways was to the post office, which is along Forest and Gilman. And I always noticed the trees because I happen to care a lot for the trees. And there was an oak tree on the property at three thirty two that I used to look at all the time, and I took pictures of it. And then this is not, I don't know if they're going to let me show the pictures, but the tree is there. I don't know if they're going to let me show the pictures, but the tree is there in uh, twenty twenty. And then one weekend, one weekend, it just disappeared. And so I've got some before and after photos that.
Mayor, do you want to make the exception, exception to share the photos? Our policy is that they're sent twenty-four hours in advance.
Yeah, it's okay. It's just, it's slides and trees, right?
Just give me one moment. I'll have to pull them up.
Could you go ahead with your comments?
So there's trees uh, around the perimeter of the property, but there was one uh, in the center and it was an oak tree. And it just disappeared and uh. No, that's me, not the photos of the tree. And I, when this happened, I uh, let urban forestry know and then he. Couldn't find uh, the, the owners and it was hidden behind an LLC at the time apparently. So anyway, I've been biking around Palo Alto and liked to go that way. Noticed the tree was missing. And it would really ruin my whole sense of Palo Alto with the grand lawn that they have there and some setback and some feeling of the nineteen twenties. And um. I see the picture on the screen there. Maybe just a click away here.
Are we close to the trees?
So there's two pictures. One is before and after. Uh, the one on the right, you'll see a big healthy oak and then. Next to it is a picture of the same garage minus the oak. And. That's all I had to say.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Liz G. Liz, you should be able to meet yourself and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Hi. Yeah, um, interesting um, that the uh. Applicant is talking about meaningful, meaningful housing for Palo Altons. Um, a little bit of context, my fiance actually lived at three, three, two in nineteen eighty-nine. In fact, Loma Pareda. Uh, earthquake occurred while he was in a little studio for three hundred and eighty dollars a month. Um, he was an artist who could support himself with his music and reasonably pay rent. Let's fast forward, um, sixteen units at, at eighty percent AMI, that's not enough. We need housing for working families. These families are those residents and workers at our local eateries. At our salons and boutiques and other retailers like Whole Foods right around the corner where many of its. Uh, employees actually live in their vehicles or has it hardware. I don't see this applicant talking very uh, deeply about homes for working families. Who are as invested in this town as the town is not invested in our workers. Our workers are the heartbeat of our community and it's the workers who serve the billionaires. Who are, you know, sucking up many, many homes on Bryant and Newell and. Um, and these workers serve these more wealthy affluent households. So I really, I know these uh, these applicants are very eager. It is a lot about money. But we need homes that are about hundred and twenty AMI. Families who can live and thrive in downtown infill areas um, of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy A followed by Lisa L.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, City Council. This is a superb site for dense housing. As a neighbor, I'm excited to see it move forward and I hope it does so quickly. Site is close to Caltrain, bus lanes, bike lanes, services, retail, jobs, all the good stuff. It is exactly this kind of project that enables more of our residents to live a healthy, enjoyable and sustainable lifestyle. This project is not out of scale with its surroundings. Within a quarter mile, there are many tall buildings as tall or taller. I have a fun list here. The Mark, a hundred and thirty-five feet, Casa Real, eighty feet, Lanning Chateau, seventy-three feet, Graduate, ninety, Channing House, hundred and forty. Mia Apartments, eighty, City Hall, a hundred and twenty-two, and five twenty-five University, two hundred and thirty-seven feet tall. Um, I'll note that the mark is a hundred and eighty-four dwelling units per acre. And the Lanning Chateau, which houses several P U S Palo Alto School District teachers, is three hundred and twenty-six dwelling units per acre. With regard to parking, a city completed parking survey in twenty eighteen, found the mark just up the street, similar product type. Um, to have an occupied parking rate of point seven nine spaces per unit. We also know from the study that downtown residents like me commute and drive at much lower rates than the rest of the city. With over twenty-three percent of residents walking or biking to work. We desperately need housing and desperately need density in the right locations and this site is perfect for it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa L.
Hi, my name's Lisa and I'm a resident at seven oh seven Bryant Street. I'm here to support my neighbors and I do agree with what Ignacio and Judith and David and Fred have shared. I also want to make a point that the parking entrance so close to Bryant Avenue is a major concern. It's very close to Bryant Street, which is a bike boulevard. It's difficult for me to get out of seven oh seven Bryant and that's a very small building. Because of the traffic and the parking and the bikes. Having another entrance right near us would be dangerous for people who walk and bikes and cars. And of course, the other point is the massiveness that goes next to Bryant Street. The builder seemed to ignore that we existed. So it would have been really helpful if he made some plans that showed what he claimed that he cared about the neighbors. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on study session, item two.
Great, thank you very much. All right, let's come back to council and see if we have any questions for, for staff or the developer. Uh, customer Lou.
Thank you. Uh, start off, I had a couple of questions for staff. Uh, first of all, is the sequel exempt?
Yes, well, it's not a project as detailed in the staff report.
Okay. If you're, I wasn't, so council, but are you, if you're referring to the pre-screening, yes, but the project itself would be subject to CECL.
Right, right, okay. Um, I just wasn't sure what the state of exceptions uh, or timelines or things like that was. Um, I think staff also mentioned in the report and presentation that there was an option to connect to Homer. I guess through the Museum of American History and I was just kind of confused why that. Why that would practically be related to this project or if it is.
Sure. So um, there was just noted in some internal conversations uh, with transportation that there could be a potential for a through lot connection to Homer. Um, either a, a bike lane perhaps uh, through the project site. So um, just wanting to highlight that for council.
I see. Okay, I think I understand that. Um, I have a couple of questions for the applicant as well, if that is all right.
Okay.
Um, uh, first of all, I'm curious about bicycle parking and how you were thinking about that. Specifically the absence of.
Yeah, it's, I wouldn't say it was an error on the planning presentation. We're planning to fully comply with it. So I, I think it's like eighty-two spaces or whatever it is, but. Whatever that number is, we're, we want, we embrace the, the biking part of it. It's a big part of living on that block.
Yeah, I definitely agree. Thank you. Um, I'm also curious about the massing. I couldn't exactly tell from the architect's presentation. Uh, from one perspective, it looked like it was set back a little, or there was some kind of setback or at least the. Colors of the building were different on the uh, I'm sorry, I just lost this. On one, the elevations. So yeah, can you talk about the massing?
Forest street elevation?
Yes.
Yes, um, similar to um, Casa Real. We're um. Looking at some sort of vertical element that would begin to break a solid block into two blocks. And then we're looking at horizontally picking up the height from the building on the corner of Bryant. Um, and forest that we've heard from a number of people. And the part of our building that would be closest to them to forest would match their height of their building. On the street. And so we're trying to take horizontal datum lines from both our adjacent buildings. And break the scale of the building down into smaller pieces that would feel more in context with the Professorville area. Um, in order to um, make that feel like it is a transition building. And um, I will tell you, you know, we're here with um, sort of putting our toe in the water with our first ideas. And everything isn't baked, but we know that we've got to have um, sensitivity to our adjacent buildings and, and respond to that. And we're open to that.
So my understanding, the west elevation then is that it is approximately two or three floors for one segment. And then it kind of climbs in height after that.
That's correct. There are ins and outs and instead of nowhere in our building, for example, in Casa Real. It's um, eighty feet high and it's a single plane. We're going to break that down into smaller increments so that it does, so that it begins to be um, the finer grain at Bryant Street. It builds up a little as it comes to the middle of the block. The middle of the block is the densest. And then it terraces back down to the single family on the other side of Casa Real. This is like classic urban planning massing.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, it's hard to interpret the uh, the elevations and the angles from the presentation, but I appreciate that. And I'll just say that overall, I'm excited that we are exploring a significant project here. That it is a pretty good place for height. Um, and I would look forward to seeing this project come along in future stages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Stone.
Mr. Mayor, while I have the applicant, okay, through the chair, ask one question.
Yes.
Um, I believe within the, within the design, it showed also loading space, ride share spots. Is that going to be included in a final design?
Yes, absolutely. We just, at this stage, when we're just feeling what we haven't worked out. Where every little piece goes, but absolutely that is a instrumental part of a well-operating and functioning building.
Great, perfect. Thank you. And then for staff, I think my, my, my biggest concern about the project is the displacement of current residents who are living onsite. I know staff mentioned in the, uh, in the presentation, the Housing Crisis Act of twenty nineteen, which offers protections for displaced residents. We didn't get really any detail on that. Could you just kind of review some of the key provisions of how? That, how that act or additional protections in Palo Alto is going to be able to help those residents.
Believe I can take a stab at that. It's a, a great question. So there's lots of nuances in state law. Um, and just to probably pay, say a broad strokes picture here. So if we start at the local level. Um, there is relocation assistance offered um, for say like a just cause eviction. Um, whether that be through either renovations or a demolition of an existing structure where a renter uh, resides. Uh, if we go up to the state level, um, there's either say, say a right to return. Um, some comparable amenities and benefits that are afforded, say parking, uh, or perhaps a um. Communal space or anything that a building might have afforded their renters previously would need to be at some comparable levels. Um, but as for specifics, uh. That would require a little bit more attention.
Would I, I was definitely curious about the right to return. Um, and, and so. That provision there is, is, is helpful. And yeah, and we, I think we've, we've done a lot of the last several years to be able to increase protections. Um. So, so thanks. I think that's still um, a concern of mine as a, as we move forward, but. I think a reality of, of a site like this and an opportunity like this. And I think generally I'm pretty excited about this project. Yeah, concerns I had on the, on the last project as far as massing and being out of character for the, for the neighborhood doesn't exist here. I like how the applicant kind of described completing the fourth corner uh, with this project. I, I think that's really true. I, I love the attention to the detail by making this building a sister of Casa Real. And, and utilizing the open space and having the design for the kind of, to connect those, those two. Uh, that's the type of thing, architecture that we should be promoting, especially in the downtown area, especially when we have historic sites. Uh, I, I am concerned about the potential historic significance of the, of, of the current building there. Um, I, I don't know. I mean, I know it is a, I know it is a large site. I mean, it has the, and maybe sorry, mayor, one, one more question for the applicant. Have you looked into the possibility of essentially being able to build something new within the kind of, within the existing? Kind of, I guess footprint of the existing buildings. So we would not have to deal with the displacement and the loss of a potentially historic site.
Yeah, it's a fair question. So the, the back lot, which is the gravel lot between that site and three thirty-two forest. That's the only thing that allows us essentially the density to make the project feasible. Um, if not, we'd have a kind of a through fare to get to the back, like ingress and egress would be tough. Um, in addition to that, the site would be much smaller, which makes the site not feasible for a downtown project. Um, for us, we've looked at this before. We, we at one point looked at doing condos back there. We've looked at townhomes back there. And ultimately, like I mentioned earlier, we ended up doing nothing because there just wasn't enough scale to make it work.
And I appreciate you, you looking into it. I, I figured it was a long shot, um, but thought I'd ask. I, and I, I do think this project really shows your, the deep bench you have of Palo Alto residents or people with a Palo Alto past. Is being reflected in the, in the design and your recognition of things that might get in the way of a project like this. So I think whether it's through the architecture or through the attention to preserving trees. Or love what you said about real parking. It's I think always a frustration. Um, and, and to have that real parking here, uh, I, I think, I, I, I think is exciting. So again. Couple of concerns on the, on the historic preservation and on the displacement of, of current residents. But overall, uh, this is a project I'm, I'm excited to, to see move forward. And understanding there's going to be some additional modifications to the, to the actual design. But overall, this is a, I think, an exciting opportunity. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Um, I'm gonna jump in here for one thing to agree with pretty much everything that uh, Councilor Stone said. Um, but I want to make two sort of big. Bigger issues. Um, one, one is that, you know, this, I, I think as one of the public speakers said, th- this is almost the poster child. For exactly the kind of project that we need in downtown. I mean, this is where density is, is relevant, where it's needed. Uh, the, the things that we worry about in other projects of uh, retail and restaurants and grocery stores and all that. It's just already here and it's walkable and the transit is there. So it just, it sort of meets all those criteria. With the unfortunate part of that, you know, in one part of the, the layout, it's going to be um, problematic for, for the existing residents. And mention that again later, but, um, but the second thing is, and this hasn't really been emphasized, and those who are not doing projects. Maybe don't always understand that is that you need a, a size. maybe don't always understand that, is that you need a size of a project. Enough land to really make this happen. And the facts on the ground are, there just aren't many downtown. So on the one hand, if we're talking about, you know, downtown is the best area for density and height because of that, and we can get a lot of units in there, but you also have a lot of amenities there, then we just don't have many chances other than, than this kind of location. So that's the second thing that makes this, you know, a really strong location. And I'm hearing from the, the developer and the architect that they want to be sensitive going forward. I understand, however, that if you say, well, let's reduce the height of that from eight, so it doesn't impact at all the neighbors who are two stories. I mean, that's not going to be the solution. So you, you'd have to be more creative to address that. And I think we all understand that, that dilemma. But, but I think this is on the, on the right path and in the right space for the right reasons. So. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments are largely in line with my colleagues. And thank you for bringing this project forward. And I want to thank the residents for coming and making us think hard about the details of how best to, to live into this project. But it's, it's an exciting opportunity and we don't want to squander a space like this, both the size and location. I do have a couple of questions before I make further comment, just to clarify a couple of things, if I may. I think I, I don't know whether this is staff or applicant, so I'll just ask them. I just wanted to double check on the open space, because I believe with this project, there's eighty-seven percent lot coverage. But I know you talked about exceeding the open space because of sharing the open space with the neighbor. Are we double counting there? Or is it still even giving them their due and you, your due? Is it still exceeding the open space requirement?
Yeah, it's a great question. I, I don't know how staff feel about me addressing this, but happy to. Well, we're envisioning the twos at campus together, so this would be the open space requirement for that new building. To give you a scale of that backyard and how large it is, my brother got married back there and we're all Italians, so there were like over a hundred people there, right? And it was fine. So it's, it's a pretty special place with the current lot layout for Casa Real. It's not like, you know, because of zoning, once again, we can't expand that out to that backyard. And it just feels like a really special community that can be created by the two. And so we're imagining that open space being counted towards the 332 and shared with 360, so for Casa Real. So that's how we envision it. So we're counting some of that together. There's no way that the residents of 332 aren't going to be in that, that space unless we literally build a wall between them, because it's just such a great space to be in.
And to add to that, I think probably a, a short answer would be it needs further evaluation, but if we're thinking of Casa Real, I mean, that building was built in nineteen thirty and it was one of the tallest structures in, in the city at that time. So we're talking about kind of a earlier development in the city there. So some different zoning and building code standards applied to that structure at the time of its construction. So as proposed or what's presented today is a shared open space. So that would require a little bit of some alternative. You could package it as, for providing in a proposal, an easement perhaps would be, need to be required for, for that shared space. And some of those details, I think it makes things a little bit more easier, you could say, that it's under common ownership, the two properties. So. But I would definitely defer back to my first statement that it needs further attention. So.
Great. And, and thank you. And I mean, I love the concept of having that shared open space. It, it looks beautiful and I think that's unique, but you, if we do have a lot of people between the two buildings, we want to make sure it's, and it looks like it's sizable and you heard about the wedding. So that's great. But I think that's, when you come back, that would be the kind of thing to just give us a little more look into. The other one was, I thought I saw in there that there was no bike parking. And I wanted to talk about that because you, I don't know if that's, that's right or wrong, but you're talking about the bike ways and using bikes and being downtown. We want bikes. So what's, what's going on there?
Okay, I'm going to say this once and for all. Everyone pay attention. We will have compliant bike parking. I can promise you that right here. We could, we could stamp it right now with that, put in the paper. We will have bike parking sufficient to the requirement, long-term, short-term, and bike maintenance. There will be biking on the parking, or biking, parking in the building. We got it. Yeah, we will have it.
Okay, I got it, got it, got it. Noted. Thank you. Excellent. So no, I think it's great that this, this is kind of a bonus. This was not on the housing inventory, this site, so we get this net increase of sixty-six units is great. It is within a half mile of the University Avenue train station, so approving some sort of building down the road that fits with the other buildings on the corner. But it shows we get transit-oriented development and when it's in the proper context and done well. I mean, I do hear the concern about the adjacent height to the, the neighbors, but when you're talking about stepping it down and, and being thoughtful about the massing, that's great. I love that it's infill development. I love that it meets the twenty percent BMR. So there's a lot to like about this project. And I'm excited to see how it develops. Thank you.
Councilor Bert?
Thank you. So I largely concur with my colleagues. I was really glad to hear from Rob Steinberg that, that there is an intention to have a transition in the height as on, essentially along the Bryant side to really respect the, the different heights of those townhomes that are there. And, and I was also really glad to hear him emphasize the importance of detailing and materials. That's one of the things that we've really lost in our architecture and it matters so much and it's, 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 it baffles me why so many projects lack that attention to detail when we look at the buildings that will, we'll say a building, well, that's a wonderful building in downtown Palo Alto. And you go, well, wait a minute, it's a block. What, what makes it wonderful? And it's the detailing and the materials. It's not the fundamental architectural design. So, and I have great trust that Rob Steinberg will really carry through with that. Rob maybe isn't well-known to everybody here, but Rob might be the most prominent Palo Alto architect since Birch Clark. There's a humbling statement. And there was discussion about this walkway prospect. And I was really excited to hear that, that's something I've been very interested in. When we developed the sofa area plan, we developed a walkway continuum from Scott Street and the Scott Street Park to a mid-block crosswalk through the Paseo, through the multi-density housing there, through the pathway in the park. And then we had a vision for a mid-block crosswalk to the historic Williams American Heritage House. We now have a farmer's market on Gilman and it's not, it would not be easy to figure out how to do that pathway and would probably require collaboration and willingness from the American Heritage Museum, but it would create a walkway all the way from the post office and the farmer's market all the way through that area. And the entire concept of the sofa plan of creating a walkable community was really there. And I'll make another little side note that former county supervisor and Rob's mother, Jerry Steinberg, was representing PAMP in the sofa plan thirty years ago. So it goes full circle here. The, the, kind of the dense cluster that exists at Gilman and Forest is a really interesting artifact that we'd be building on here, and I think it has real potential. One other thing on the parking, when we have these kinds of projects near transit and even more importantly, walkable services, we really do have opportunities for lower car ownership. But the missing link is often that, but occasionally somebody needs a car who's there. They may need it once every two weeks or once a month. And the car sharing concept, Zip Cars or their competitors, is something that started to go by the wayside because ride hailing was so heavily artificially discounted, almost put them out of business. They're really coming back now. And Stanford is one of the leading users of those kinds of cars. I would really encourage you to explore whatever number of slots would work economically to serve all four of those buildings there. And it would reduce the parking need very economically. This is where I, I really believe that it is a benefit to everybody to reduce the parking demand in a very cost-effective way. So thank you.
Councilor Rekdo?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this project. Overall, I really like it. The, the beautiful building, I like how the old and new meld together. It's one, that aspect of it is wonderful. It's a great location downtown, near retail, near transit. And the fact that we have real parking there, I think that's a benefit. The only thing that bothers me is the impact on the next door neighbors. And can you bring up the staff presentation, slide six? And slide six on the left side is the view from Forest. And that right-hand wall, is that the current design? We talked about step backs. Is that going to be changing or is this the current design? That vertical wall on the right side of the left side? Oh, can I talk to the applicant?
Yes.
Or maybe the architect?
I want to just make sure I understand which.
Okay, on the left picture?
Yes.
The right side of the building?
Yes.
That's the current design? There's no step backs?
There are, there are ins and outs, but is it totally resolved? Is everything finished? No, it's not. It's, we know that we're going to have to make moves on Forest and adjacent to the existing residents on Bryant to find the right balance. And to find the right balance where it's not, we just lop off part of the building and now the economics make it no longer viable. So we have to find where that sweet spot is. And is it resolved tonight? No, it is not. This is a first pass and we've tried to share with you our approach and our thinking and sort of some big moves, but all of the details are not worked out.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see on the right side, step back, or even looking at this, if you could scoot the whole thing left a little bit, that would provide a little more buffer, but.
It's going to be a little tough to shift the whole building because the property has a dog leg in the back that requires the building width. That's the one spot it fits in order to keep the, the required setbacks on both sides. So if you move it away from one side, all of a sudden, we're not conforming on the other side. But I think that there are opportunities to push the building in, to step it down a little bit and to articulate that side so that it's sympathetic and it's reasonable to the existing residents.
Okay, that would be very good because I think there's so much good on this project. I really am concerned about the impact on the next door neighbors, both on Forest and also on Homer.
Well, my charge from our client is that we need a building that not only his family is proud of, but the city and the community is also proud of. And that's our goal.
Okay, that's a wonderful goal and I look forward to seeing this being built and being an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Thanks very much for the presentations and public comment and we'll look for the next, the next round. Thank you, staff. We are now going to address the consent calendar. Okay, first, Councilor Lou?
I will recuse from item seven and item thirteen because I own real property nearby.
And I will recuse from item thirteen because at least one of the parcels has at least partial ownership by Stanford University for whom I provide legal services.
Okay, and I'm going to note that number thirteen is quasi-judicial. So if there are any disclosures on interface with any developers, please raise them now. No disclosures, okay. I'll also note for the record that item ten and item twelve require a two-thirds vote of the total membership, not just those present. So that would be five councilmembers with the averaging up. Sir, public comment?
Yes, there are two requests to see you speak. One moment. Our first speaker is Carol S. Carol, Carol S, you should be able to.
Yes. You're ready? I'm ready.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Carol Scott. My home is in Evergreen Park. I'm writing today or speaking to you today to request that you take item seven off of the consent calendar. This is a proposal that seeks to add fifteen employee permits to the Evergreen Park RPP as well as make certain other zone changes. I have a number of concerns about this proposal, but I will stick to the major one, which is the proposal to add fifteen permits to the RPP. At this present time, the RPP is not sold out. So there are permits available in the RPP and there is no urgent or other need to increase the permits at this time. The staff has not identified, at least not to residents in meetings with the staff, where it expects to see future demand. It seems to us that we should wait until the need arises before we design a solution to it and in the process, further inconvenience Evergreen Park residents. This, this particular area, Evergreen Park, at one time had forty permits in the neighborhood for businesses along El Camino Real. Those permits were lost due to the removal of parking on El Camino. It was replaced last August. Fifty permits were added back to the RPP, ten more then were taken out. So at present, the employees have fifty more permits than they used to. If you add the additional fifteen, we will be up to sixty-five. Since the staff has stated that a total of a hundred and thirty permits were lost as a result of the removal of parking, you will now be asking Evergreen Park to take in at least half of the removed permits. This does not seem quite adequate or fair to us, particularly in the light of no demand. I will also note, since I have a couple of seconds left, that last August, when the permits were added back to the RPP, it was explained that we were under a tremendous time crunch and decisions had to be made very quickly. But there would be a parking study done later after the effects of the removal of parking were clear. And there would be a parking study done to determine what else needed to be done or whether there should be corrections. I have contacted the Office of Transportation and been told that no such study has been done. So once again, in the absence of demand and the absence of data that would help us make good decisions, I ask that you take this item off of the consent calendar. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aram J.
Okay, so I wanted to start with item number five. They scaled for, I believe it's seventy-eight line, police officers and seven management members of the, the command staff, so to speak, the police department. And I don't know where the chief is in this, but I do know that from everything I've found, and I'm, I'm trying to do a more particularized public record act to get a specific pay, including benefits, but we're talking already from the statistics I've discovered, and they may not be totally accurate, that between police and the fire department, public safety generally, we're talking about sixty percent of the general fund. I think we're living beyond our means. Now, you know, I see the problem that Now, you know, I see the problem that you're looking to make sure that we're competitive with other departments, but isn't there something called loyalty? I was a public servant for more than 25 years as a public defender. And if somebody said, oh, you know, Aram, we're not going to give you the raise that you want this year or next year, I'm going to say, okay, well, then I'm going to run out of here. No, it is an honor to serve the public. I served it very diligently for 25 years. So I don't think, if, if the police officers don't want to stay in Palo Alto, if they're not well, to want to do that in the first place, well, so be it. I'm trying to find out, of course, and you've seen my Public Records Act regarding the chief. I want to find out because of his commute to and from Morgan Hill that nobody told us about at the time he was being hired. Is he a part-time chief or a full-time chief? And so I'm trying to seek the records to see, is he accountable and reliable in doing his job or not? Secondly, let's move on to the item number nine briefly. That's a consultant fee for our planning folks over five years, $2 million. I think that needs to go off to a calendar. I know a max of $2 million. I think that one needs to be discussed along with number five. Both of them need to come off the calendar. They're important, important matters. They're going to increase our deficit and we know that we already have more than a $500 million per, per debt. And a lot of that, as you know, from the material I sent you this weekend, is because of the high rate of retirement pay through purse to, to police and, and law enforcement, and the fire folks. Finally, life moves. I, I understand now after reading the staff report, this is to continue, the outreach is being done well. I would just say parenthetically that I'm disappointed that again, one of our projects is going to be continued for a second time. That's the homeless shelter. It's supposed to have opened up in 2023. Now we're going off into 2026. It looks like a public unsafety building that is now two years in delay. And I do say that you need to look at that spotlight, spotlight article that I sent you. This sounds like a spotlight about all the problems with their building and their shelter that's very similar to the one that we're building. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz G.
Yeah, I'd also like to speak on instead items spent in 13 and also the contract for life move seven. I, this should be taken off the consent calendar. Parking. There's working families there that have utility vehicles, clean pools or do 24-hour plumbing or work in construction. They have nowhere to park. They cannot park and can lift. It does not accommodate utility vehicles. The agreement between the city and Stanford was for work folks.
Liz? Looks like she has dropped off of Zoom. So with that, we have no further requests to speak. Oh, I see her back on here. Let me see if she's able to speak. All right, looks like she's unable to speak. And that concludes public comment on consent calendar items three through 15.
Okay, let's come back to, council, you had the earlier information of the recusals recorded. So, we have any motions to pull? No council motions to pull? Councilmember Burt, your light's on? Okay. All right, then can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second? It is, okay, I seconded. All right. Take that to a vote.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Rectal?
Yes.
Mayor Lalling?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now we have city manager comments on the way to our break.
Yeah, I'm the only thing standing behind.
That was a warning.
Between you and the break. I will make this quick. Let's see, thank you, city clerk, assistance with some slides. I do want to welcome the council back and community to city council meetings that you, I'm sure have missed during the month of July. It being August, one thing, not on a slide, but want to remind all of us that school starts this week. So be careful out on our streets. Wish the best to both students and parents who have their kids back in school. I believe it's middle and high schools start on Wednesday and the elementary schools on Thursday. So over the course of the week, we will see lots more traffic around town. So next slide, please. Speaking of milestones and dates, the public safety building is, is all of us, I suspect, the most eagerly anticipated opening in town. We have now a new date, as shown here. Move-in expected to begin on September 2nd. So this, let me recognize, is pushing it out. It's pushed out a few times. City council knows we've had some issues with our contractor. Most recently, do you want to share that in July, there was some water, some waterproofing work that was being done in the basements that impacted electrical cabling and as such, that has resulted in some more delay than we had planned for, as that is being corrected by the contractor. So that said, again, we've got this new date of September 2nd for move-in. Anyone who's done either remodel or construction for a new home knows how much you are looking forward to that date as our teams are and I know the community is as well. And just to be sure, it's on, everyone knows it's on our radar screen, holding an open house as once the phased move-in begins is on the plate. So we'll have more information on that as the dates gets closer. Next slide, please. Okay, let's see, on a number of ongoing community engagement opportunities, one that some community members, I'm sure has, have already seen, our annual community survey is out. We are now in the phase that the statistically selected random sampling is ongoing and beginning or, yeah, has, has just begun. And then as the, that work proceeds, the survey will open to all and that will occur, survey opening on August 29th. So all, anyone who's particularly motivated and would like to provide input to the city on both ongoing programs as well as issues of concern can do so in the upcoming weeks. We also have a neighborhood town hall coming up for the neighborhoods of downtown, University South, Profeserville and Sand Hill Corridor. Looks like we've got to work on our spell check on our slides, a little rusty after a month off. And that will occur on August 20th. At 5:45, we'll have the reception then leading into the town hall itself here at City Hall. Then a few upcoming community meetings to note, South Palo Alto, this is the bike and pedestrian crossings of the rail corridor in South Palo Alto coming up on September 9th. Coverley Community Meeting on the 17th and our next City Hall open house on the 24th of September in the afternoon. Next slide, please. Then want to spend a minute talking about energy reach codes. As council knows and community members may be aware, every three years, state of California adopts new building codes, standards. And that's an opportunity for cities to adopt particular local requirements. And we have a community meeting on this topic coming up this Wednesday, August 13th, 4:00 PM at City Hall. This is also a hybrid meeting, so members of the community will be able to attend virtually. One of the elements of this year's cycle is the city will be considering an urgency ordinance to make amendments in advance of some changes of state and state law. So that will be discussed this week and again, brought to the city council, currently planned later in September. And this affects potential mandates for conversion at end of life for gas, water heaters to heat pump and air conditioning units as well. So again, this particular topic will have both a community meeting this week. We have a specific outreach for industry professionals as well. So information available at City, it's, oh, this is the old URL, at paloalta.gov/reachcodeupdate. Next slide, please. Then just noting a few other more fun events that are upcoming through the remainder of August. A number of summer-related events, movie nights, training available for a variety of areas of community interest, third Thursday, and a few other items to end your summer on a high, high note. Next slide, please. And finally, just want to provide a quick preview of some upcoming city council items. Next week, on the 18th, we have a study session on mid, mid-year check-in on city council meeting productivity. And then action items for the zoning code amendment for de minimis administrative exceptions. No city council meetings the following weeks on Sep, actually August 25th, I guess it is, as well as on September 1st, your next meeting then will be on September 8th with study sessions on the 414 California Avenue proposal as well as the return on the budget. FY26 recommended adjustments. And then as noted earlier, possible consideration of urgency, urgency ordinance related to local re-code. Then on the 15th, study session on managing consultant services, action items related to the outdoor lighting or dark skies ordinance and the NCPA battery energy storage project agreement. Then finally, on September 29th, a study session for the South Palo Alto Bike Pedestrian Connectivity Project. And then finally, the action item to have direction related to a city project, affordable housing project at 340 Portage Avenue. With that, mayor, that completes my comments for this evening. I'm back to you.
Great, Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. I had two questions. I was glad to see the reference to the upcoming reach code update, but I was pleasantly surprised to see that, given that the, the state legislature had passed AB 130 that put what I thought was a freeze on being able to put new reach codes. So, or is this somehow exempt from that?
The item being, being brought forward is to meet a deadline stated in that legislation. And it exempts changes made prior or effective in September. And so that's the reason for the urgency. At the same time, there is a, an exemption that we believe we qualify for. But that said, in an abundance of caution, we are bringing forward the urgency ordinance while we're also pursuing the exemption.
Great, thanks for that clarification. And then I know that on August 25th, as councilmember Rectal mentioned, Policy and Services Committee is going to have a agenda item on the RVs in the community. But I didn't see that tentatively agendized to come to the council in September. And given kind of that, the community concern on that, is that planned to get promptly to the council after that?
It is. Policy and Services. Thank you. We do want to provide some space and flexibility for the PNS committee and their recommendations, but we will make adjustments as needed in order to ensure we're bringing it forward in a timely manner.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for council break, so we will return at approximately 5 after 9. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, council members. My name is Tammy Jasso. I'm here representing the fire department and the fire marshal. And I am here because we are doing the third part of our weed abatement program. And what that involves is, so back in December, you all declared weeds a nuisance. And there's a list of property owners that are on the weed abatement list. There, in February, we go through a hearing where they can argue whether or not they should be on that list. After that, they will undergo an inspection. And if they fail that inspection, their weeds on their property will be abated by the county and they will be put on an assessment list. So tonight, you are approving that list and also hearing objections to that, being on that list. Garrick, who is from the Santa Clara County, who runs our weed abatement program for us, he is also here online if you have any questions. And so, there you go.
We read those names. Do we also need to hear those names?
You do not. I think you simply need to see if we have any objections from members of the public.
Right. Seeing any of those online or any in the room?
No, Mayor, no requests to speak and no hands are raised on to.
Okay. So there are no objections, so I think we can adopt the resolution. And I need a motion in that regard.
I say move.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Stone, second. Any other questions, comments? All right. Oh, okay. Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, just one that I should know the answer to, but does the weed abatement requirement apply to properties of public agencies?
Hi, good evening. This is Garrick Osalewski with Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program. I'd be happy to answer that question. Our program only focuses on privately owned properties. Anytime that there's an issue regarding publicly owned property, we typically will communicate issues to that public agency and have them address it internally.
Thank you.
Seeing no other, let's go to a vote.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Motion carries 601. Councilmember Lefton Ham's absent.
Thank you very much. We'll go to our last action item.
Good evening, Alan Curtory, Director of Utilities. I have the pleasure of opening up this discussion. We will be talking about the water supply agreement with the San Francisco PUC. I just want to give you a little background. We first entered this agreement in 2009, amended it in 2018, and again in 2021. So this would be the third amendment to this agreement. I have Carla Daly here. She's our Assistant Director of Utilities for Resources, and she'll be providing your presentation.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I do have a quick presentation and then we'll be more than happy to answer questions at the end. Next slide, please. So this evening, I'm going to be speaking to you about a package deal that has three. that has three elements to it that are all entwined and related to each other in this negotiated agreement that the Bosca Agencies, Bay Area Water Supply, and Conservation Agency, agencies that all take water from San Francisco and with San Francisco itself, our water supplier. I'm going to start by giving you a very brief overview of the Water Supply Agreement, and then talk about those specific elements in a little more detail. As Alan said, this agreement dates back, you know, really to 1984, to a settlement that was reached with San Francisco. But most recently, this current form of the contract is from 2009, so it's had a couple of amended and restated versions of it. And the amendments proposed tonight will be the third of those. Next slide, please. So some key elements of that Water Supply Agreement. It does govern the water supply that we wholesale customers receive from San Francisco. And it's kind of a unique agreement in that the agreement is the same for all 26 agencies, but we each, each of our councils or boards approve any amendments to that agreement. It defines how costs are split between the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission and the wholesale customers. And included in that is a minimum purchase requirement for a handful of the wholesale agencies. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in detail in just a minute. It also provides a methodology for how water is divided during a drought between San Francisco's retail customers and the wholesale customers as a group. Then there is a provision within the agreement that allows the 26 wholesale customers to come up with and adopt a methodology for dividing our piece of the pie among the 26 of us. The Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, or Bosca, has some administrative duties under the contract, but is not a party to the contract. Only the 26 wholesale customers are. Next slide, please. So first, I'm going to talk about an amendment to the Water Supply Agreement that addresses this minimum purchase requirement. Next slide. The requirement was originally intended to ensure that wholesale customers who have access to other imported supplies not ship their purchases away from San Francisco to those alternative supplies, leaving the revenue requirement to be picked up by the remaining wholesale customers. The quantities were assigned in 1984 as part of that settlement agreement and were last adjusted as part of the 2009 Water Supply Agreement. It does not apply during droughts notably. Next slide, please. So a lot has changed since 2009. We have gone through multiple droughts, a pandemic. We, as a region, have invested heavily in water conservation and leak mitigation, all kinds of activities that have reduced our demand across the region. The proposed amendment would achieve three things for those four customers that have that minimum purchase requirement. First, it will reset the minimum purchase requirement to 80% of use in the previous four non-drought years, and also include a provision that those purchase requirements be revisited, can be revisited after 10 years, and evaluated for possible downward adjustment. This will reset that purchase quantity at levels that are more realistic to what those four agencies are able to purchase from, from San Francisco. Secondly, there is a new provision that will allow for a transition period between a drought and when those purchase requirements kick back in. The way the contract is structured right now, while those purchase requirements are waived during a drought, the next year immediately following a drought, those purchase requirements go right back up to their full levels. We all know that it takes some time for water sales to recover after a drought period, and so this allows for a midpoint between what the agency was buying during the drought and what that minimum purchase quantity number is in that year right after a drought. The third thing that is included in this amendment is what we are referring to as a family plan. And what that says is that if those four minimum purchase quantity agencies have, are able to, in any given year, collectively meet their minimum purchase quantity amount that no individual agency would pay a penalty to the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. Of course, if that's not the case, then penalties would be applied, as they are today, to the individual agency that is falling short of their, of their purchase obligation. Next slide, please. Because these penalties would hopefully go down, which is the point of this amendment, there is a projected cost to the other, to all of the wholesale agencies, including San Francisco's retail customers. And that estimate is, even in the highest case, less than a 1% rate increase. So 0.13% to 0.72% potential rate increase. And that, again, is because, you know, Mountain View has paid over $11 million over the last few years in penalties for not being able to use as much water as is designated in their contract. And so to the extent that Mountain View is not paying penalties, the revenue requirement stays the same, and that gets peanut buttered over the rest of the users, including San Francisco's retail customers. From Palo Alto's standpoint, there, there is a particular interest in resolving this problem. Mountain View is not only our neighbor, but they are a partner at our Regional Water Quality Control Plant. And to the extent that they are able to invest more in their recycled water system, which is quite robust and exists in an area where Mountain View is experiencing and has experienced a lot of commercial growth, they are very uniquely positioned to use more recycled water, helping all of us meet our discharge requirements from the plant. And so from a very practical standpoint, we, as Palo Alto, are and should be very interested in Mountain View being able to spend those dollars in those ways rather than paying penalties to the SFPUC for water that they are unable to take. The second bullet, very marginally, these less expensive local investments in things like Purple Pipe, where that already makes sense for a city like Mountain View, that may help delay on the margin some of the water supply projects that the SFPUC might be considering in the future. I don't want to overstate the impact of this, but it could be on the margin something to consider. And then I think, thirdly, ensuring our neighbors are not charged for water that they cannot take exhibits good regional water citizenship. Next slide, please. The second aspect of this three-pronged package that I want to briefly talk about is a modification to how water is divided between San Francisco's retail customers and the wholesale customers. Next slide, please. So there are two levels of water allocation that, that occur. The first is laid out in the Water Supply Agreement. It is the Tier One Plan, and that is how that pie of water available during a drought gets divided between San Francisco and the wholesale customers. And then Tier Two is the methodology by which that piece of the pie that the wholesale customers are allocated gets divided among the 26 of us. And I'm going to talk about Tier Two a little bit more in just a second. But both Tier One and Tier Two only apply during official system-wide shortages, and they only apply in shortages up to 20% system-wide. Excess use charges are only applied during mandatory shortage emergencies. So if San Francisco is asking for a voluntary 10% reduction, there are no excess use charges that are levied. And there are some mechanisms, mechanisms in place for wholesale customers to transfer shortage allocations among ourselves or bank water among ourselves to help us really manage water shortage situations on the system. Next slide, please. So the Tier One Amendment, or the amendment, proposed amendment that applies to Tier One is another family plan, different from the one that applies to the minimum purchase quantity aspect of the contract, but is similar in nature. This new amendment says that during a mandatory cutback, if the wholesale customers are collectively below the allocation that results from that Tier One methodology, then no one is charged an excess use penalty. Again, if that's not the case, then we are in a situation equivalent to our status quo, that if someone, if an individual, if an individual agency is above their allocation, then they are subject to those excess use penalties. So this is really kind of a no downside amendment, and something that we're very pleased that San Francisco agreed to in this negotiation. Next slide, please. So the last part of this three-pronged package is an update to the Tier Two drought allocation plan. Next slide. Once again, Tier Two is the methodology that designates how water is divided up among the 26 wholesale customers. It, the Water Supply Agreement has a provision in it that allows for the Bosca Agencies to get together and come to agreement on how we want this methodology to be set up. It applies during supply shortages. The current formula expired actually in 2019, and the Bosca Board has taken a series of one-year extensions. But we know from applying this formula in '21, '22 that it didn't work, the, the current formula did not work very well and resulted in some kind of crazy cutbacks for some agencies in the 90% range and for others in the single digits. And we all really recognize that this is not a workable formula when we are faced in the future with a drought. And so we, as the 26 agencies, embarked on this effort to develop a new methodology. Next slide, please. And over the course of more than two and a half years and more than 60 meetings among those 26 agencies, we came to an agreement. We started with these policy principles that led to a sequential allocation formula to build up how much water each agency would receive during a drought. First and foremost, making sure that we are all able to meet our basic health and safety needs in our communities. Second, minimizing economic impacts. Third, providing predictability during water supply shortages. And also making sure that whatever formula we arrived at did not disincentivize conservation or local agencies investing in alternative water supplies that make sense for their systems. Next slide, please. The, the result of this negotiated agreement is a slightly higher cutback to Palo Alto than what we were subject to under the old formula. And I've shown really the worst case here, which is a 25% cutback. And you might say, why is it 25% when you just told me that this only applies up to 20%? 20% is a system-wide shortage as a result of the Tier One allocation that divides water between the retail customers in the city and the 26 wholesale customers. Wholesale customers receive a larger cutback. And the reason for that is San Francisco is very dense. It has very little outdoor water use. We obviously have a lot more of that in the more suburban areas of the Bay Area. And so a 20% system-wide cutback is the equivalent of about a 25% wholesale cutback. But the real takeaway that I would like you to have from this slide is that even though the required cutback is a little higher for Palo Alto under this new formula, because of the way that we practically manage those cutbacks via our water shortage contingency plan, which lays out what types of water use restrictions would we ask our community to accept for various levels of shortage, those come in 10% blocks, and we would not be asking our customers to do anything different under the new formula than what we would have asked them to do under the old formula. For example, in a Stage Three cutback where we are between a 20 and 30% need for reduction, we would be limiting the number of days per week that our community is asked to irrigate their, their landscapes, and that would stay the same. Next slide, please. So we do have a recommendation before you to approve the two resolutions that amend the Water Supply Agreement and adopt this negotiated Tier Two drought response. I do want to acknowledge that this comes atypically without a recommendation from the Utilities Advisory Commission. We did bring this item to them in June, and there was a split vote at the end of the meeting. There was, there, you know, are concerns about San Francisco's practices of how they operate their system and some concerns around long-term planning and some expensive alternative water supplies that have been discussed. But this agreement before you is really separate from that. And so we are asking you and recommending that you approve these two resolutions. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any first questions, or should we go to a public comment first? Okay. Public comment?
Our first speaker is Pat S.
Hi, everybody. It's an honor to get to speak before the Palo Alto City Council tonight. As you know, my name is Pat Showalter, and I serve on the City Council in Mountain View, your next-door neighbor. And I also serve on the Bosca Board with your Representative Greer Stone. I'm here to ask you to approve the Water Supply Agreement. We approved it on June 24th. The Water Supply Agreement is really about supporting water conservation, a principle that we all hold dear. Part one is to reset the minimum purchase requirement. You heard a lot about why that is a big benefit to Mountain View, but it will spill over because we will have more money to spend on water systems. And then the second part is about resetting our drought allocations. And these have been put together very carefully by our staffs to be things that they know we can do. So I, I find it very comfortable to recommend that we all agree to that. A serious hurdle to this whole process is that every contractor and the SFPUC has to approve that. Tonight, you're going to be the 14th. I hope you're going to be the 14th, anyway. As neighbors, the city of Mountain View and Palo Alto, we have a really longstanding history of collaborating on so many things. We have a particularly strong record of collaborating on things related to water. You run the, the Regional Water Quality Wastewater Plant. We are very grateful to that. You do a great job of it. And Mountain View supplies most of the wastewater, or much of the wastewater. One of the things I'm particularly excited to share tonight, maybe you knew that, but I didn't know this until I was reading some staff reports, is that the Advanced Purification Plant that will allow us to upgrade our recycled water substantially is now under construction. We have been talking about this for quite a few years, but now it's under construction. If things go on schedule, we will have that advanced purified water being delivered in June of 2028. This is a perfect example of the kind of water project that we can do to make our communities more drought-proof. Anyway, I also want to thank you for being good neighbors by appointing two Mountain View residents to your community advisory group View residents to your community advisory group on the San Antonio Plan. That's really much appreciated. And also a big thanks to our staff who have literally worked for years on these negotiations. 60 meetings is not anything to be sneezed at. That's a lot of work.
Your time is up.
Oh, okay. Well, please support it. And Mr. Smigel, let's go to some after.
Our next speaker is Tom S.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. Tom Smigel, I'm the General Manager and CEO of Basca. And I wanted to mention a couple of things tonight, and you've heard that from Ms. Daly and Ms. Showalter. This is a tremendous amount of work that has gone into these negotiations by your, your staff of Palo Alto, as well as the staff of the 26 Basca agencies, as well as the staff of the city and county of San Francisco over really about a three-year period. I think there were 66 meetings, I heard, where we all got together and worked to a consensus solution to these two longstanding items and issues. And they are interconnected, and they are tied inextricably to one another. The changes are good for Palo Alto. The new allocation and rules around drought will ensure that the drought methodology is fair for those who've conserved, reduces impacts on residential indoor use and commercial customers. And also that family plan provides an advantage in case Palo Alto goes over and others were under their allocations. The amendments to reduce the minimum purchases to realistic levels for those four agencies are going to remove a barrier for those agencies to do conservation like we're doing in Palo Alto, to do projects that had developed local water supplies. And as was mentioned, we have 13 Basca agencies who have already approved this, including Hillsborough tonight. It was approved on consent. I will say that among those 13 agencies, this has not been a particularly controversial subject. Six of the 13 have gone out on consent. And so just to keep that in the back of your mind, this has been a longstanding negotiation, and a lot of people are really proud of that work and really happy to approve it. And so I hope that you all can do that again, again tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris T.
Hello, this is Chris Tuker. I am a member of the Utility Advisory Commission, but I speak to you tonight in personal capacity. That said, I do want to echo the point you heard earlier from Director Daly that in the commission's June meeting, this amendment to the agreement failed to win the support of the commission. There were three votes against it. And one of my fellow commissioners, from whom you're here in just a moment, has submitted a written comment. I'll just emphasize a couple of points that are in that letter. The first thing I want to say is that while we do, of course, want to be good neighbors, and with all respect to all the work that's been done by staffs and 66 meetings, I disagree that this agreement, that this decision is separate from the topic we've talked about before with regard to SFPUC, our water supplier, and the need we have of great, for greater transparency, greater cooperation and collaboration from SFPUC to discuss alternate water supplies. I'm talking about multimillion-dollar investments that we have considered and studied and so far put aside, but still multimillion-dollar investments in what one might call toilet-to-the-top water recycling projects. We simply can't make these decisions without the data that we need from SFPUC. The contract document refers to alt-water projects. It notes the $300 million to $98 million that SFPUC has budgeted. It talks about water investments that our fellow Basca members like Alameda and Mountain View are making in alt-water. This decision is tied to alt-water, and alt-water is tied to the discussions we've had, captured, for example, in council member Stone's letter to Basca or to SFPUC requesting greater collaboration, by which I mean they've given us one model, one set of assumptions, one design drought that I call a Frankenstein of worst-case scenarios layered on top of each other, and have refused to be transparent or provide any kind of sensitivity analysis, any background data, any alternate scenarios, so that we can make informed decisions that tie into really big investments and very politically tricky, politically sensitive decisions about investing in water recycling. And so I want to emphasize the connection between this contract amendment and, and those alt-water decisions and ask that we get more collaboration from the, from the commission to inform us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ustav G.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Ustav Gupta, and I'm a member of the Utilities Advisory Commission, though I am speaking tonight in my personal capacity. I have submitted detailed written comments for the record, which I hope you will review. My message tonight is simple. Approving these water agreement amendments would be a fiscally irresponsible decision made without essential data. These amendments are not a simple administrative update. They are explicitly designed by their own recitals to support hundreds of millions of dollars in new alternative water supply projects across the region. The staff report itself notes that our regional water system wholesaler, the SFPUC, has budgeted nearly $300 million for these projects over the next decade. And our neighbors in Alameda County, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale are planning their own expensive projects. The problem is, we have no credible evidence that these massive investments are even necessary. For months, we have asked the SFPUC for an updated drought planning forecast, the fundamental data needed to justify the spending. That data has not been provided. Without it, we are flying blind. This item comes to you tonight without a recommendation from either the Utilities Advisory Commission or the Finance Committee. At the UAC, my motion to get this essential data before making a recommendation was substituted by an up or down motion by our chair, which resulted in a tie vote, leaving the council without our formal advice. In addition, other than the cost range provided by staff, we have no financial modeling or sensitivity analysis looking forward as to the rate impacts. The financial risks here are significant. The regional water system is largely a fixed cost system. When other agencies build their own supplies and reduce their purchases from SFPUC, Palo Alto ratepayers must shoulder a larger share of the fixed costs. Costs for us depend on, quote, "the whim of the other 21 agencies," end quote. This could create a cost spiral for our residents as other agencies build alternative water supplies and are under reduced purchase requirements. We only need to look to San Diego to see how this plays out. They invested billions in, in alternative water supplies. When water demand fell, they were left with massive debt and are now facing a steep double-digit rate hike. We should not repeat their mistakes. Therefore, I ask you not to approve these amendments at this time. Send this item back to the UAC to be reviewed properly after we receive critical drought forecast data from the SFPUC and after we have better cost modeling for impacts on Palo Altans. Let's not rush, and let's do our due diligence first. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Peter D.
Good evening. I'm Peter Drechmeyer, and I serve as Policy Director for the Tuolumne River Trust. The water supply agreement gives the SFPUC the authority to impose rationing of up to 20%. To go above that, they must consult with the wholesale customers, and if the wholesale customers disagree with the SFPUC, they can challenge the rationing requirements. Nine years ago, when the state water board issued a draft document for the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan, the SFPUC immediately asserted that the plan could lead to 50% rationing. It provided no details to support their claim, and the wholesale customers didn't challenge it. There was no discussion about whether the SFPUC rationing policy was prudent. Then Palo Alto embarked on its One Water Plan. It was based on the premise that we might experience 50% rationing based on what we were told by the SFPUC, or we would need to develop expensive alternative water supplies to fill the supply gap. That One Water Plan cost the city more than half a million dollars. Earlier this year, our UAC took up the issue and really dug into it. They looked at all of the evidence, and they ended up rejecting the One Water Plan because it was based on a false premise of 50% rationing. The SFPUC has incredible water entitlements and storage. In an average year, they're entitled to enough water to last three years, and they have enough storage in their reservoirs to last six years. During the recent three-year drought, they never had less than four years' worth of water in storage, and yet they imposed rationing. In June, Valley Water came out with their draft water supply master plan for 2050. They're basing their rationing policy on the six-year drought of record, which was 1987 to 1992, six years. Now, if the SFPUC had a similar rationing policy, we could manage the Bay Delta Plan flow requirements without requiring any rationing or developing any alternative water supplies. That's a big savings. But the PUC is planning for something they call the Design Drought, which adds the 1976-77 drought to the drought of record. And while that's only two years, that was the third most severe drought on record as measured by water needed out of storage. So it makes their drought plan 72% more severe than Valley Waters. Huge disconnect. And the SFPUC's own climate change study suggests the Design Drought might occur once in 8,000 years or more. The SFPUC also uses extremely inflated water demand projections. Over the past 25 years, they have over-projected demand by an average of 22%. And now they're planning an alternative water supply plan to make up this false deficit that could cost between $17 billion and $25 billion. The UAC recommended information, as you heard, it was denied. The League of Women Voters tried to organize a forum, it was denied. It's time for the City Council to do it.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patty R. Patty, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
All right. Good evening. My name is Patty Rigir, and I've been engaged in the water issues for the past decade. I've testified before the state water board, the SFPUC, Basca, and here before the City Council. As a Palo Altoan, I've been very proud of the leadership council member Stone has shown on Basca Board Directors, and want to thank him personally, thank him, thank Greer. Tonight, I'd like to read a statement from my colleague and fellow Palo Altoan, Stephen Rosenbloom, who is not able to participate tonight. Dear Mayor, and I think he sent this a couple of months ago to you. Dear Mary Lowing and City Council, I recently requested summary of the Bay Water Supply and Conservation Agency's anti-environmental legal expenses related to the state water board's Bay Delta water quality control and the federal energy regulatory mission's relicensing of the Don Pedro Dam on the Tuolumne River. Basca represents Palo Alto in negotiations with SFPUC. The documents revealed that Basca has spent $3 million opposing environmental protections. I don't think my Palo, Palo Altans would approve of these expeditions, especially since we are the ones who ultimately paid the share. That share, this is my own point, that was $225,000 that Palo Alto, that was their share. We, Palo Altans care deeply about the San Francisco Bay, the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta, and our rivers, including the Tuolumne River, where we get our hetch-hetchy water. Those of us who follow Basca, as I have for the past eight years, are extremely disappointed in their policies and actions that subvert efforts to restore the salmon runs and aquatic ecosystems, ecosystems. In 2016, Barea voters overwhelmingly approved Measure AA, the San Francisco Bay Clean Water Pollution Prevention and the Habitat Restoration Measure, electing to tax ourselves to restore the San Francisco Bay. The 70% yes vote demonstrates the commitment that Palo Alto residents are to revitalize our ecosystems. We can improve our conditions of the Tuolumne River and the Bay Delta without risking running out of water. The facts will prove this. Please consider to prove this truth. And I, that is sincerely Steve Rosenbloom. And I personally, Patty Rigir, would really like it if the City Council would pursue a study session and, and, and really listen to everybody, the stakeholders and everyone, so that's not a he-she statements, and we could really come to the bottom with transparency and know what we're dealing with. And I want to thank you again. And I'm sorry if I read too fast, but I wanted to get my 20-second, my three minutes in. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on action item 17.
Okay, let's come back to the dais and get some comments from our Basca man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. And I just want to really appreciate first, staff, Ms. Daly, the presentation was fantastic. I know all the 66 meetings, incredible, and, and the negotiations and everything out, and just being able to present this incredibly complex topic and issue in the timeframe that you did and, and making it, I think, real, the ability for all of us to be able to understand was, was great. So thank you. And one just clarifying question before I kind of get into my remarks is that the SFPUC is not receiving additional kind of funds or money from this revised agreement, right? It's not expanding the size of the pie. It's really just kind of reallocating the size of the individual slices within that pie.
That is correct.
Thank you. And so I just wanted to kind of make that clear because I know there is some, there is, I think, very reasonable concerns around the SFPUC, questions around alternative water supplies and, and drought scenarios and kind of everyone's individual role and Palo Alto's role to play. And I've been raising these questions at, at, at Basca, and I've been working with, with Mr. Smigel in getting a lot of those answers from the SFPUC. And I think I've been a bit of a pain at, at times, but, and so I, so I share these concerns that many of our UAC members have and, and members of the public, but I do find this to be a, a very separate issue here. And tonight, we're having an opportunity to approve two resolutions that are just, that are the product of years and 66 meetings and negotiations amongst 26 Basca agencies. And I think one thing important to kind of keep in mind, especially for us here in Palo Alto, is we're not going to be able to make any changes at this, I mean, at this point, it's really, we're, we're voting yes or voting no. I think any changes would effectually be a no and back to the drawing board, or really more likely just back to Basca at that point. I, and I think most importantly, we've been in these negotiations and these, and really, I don't want to even say negotiation, I think collaboration with the city of Mountain View in modernizing our, our water supply and our drought allocation plans to just better reflect today's realities. And kind of the two main parts for me, first, the amendments to the water supply agreement just brings more fairness to the system. Right now, just a few agencies like Mountain View paying millions of dollars for water that they're not using, and Mountain View has invested, again, not an investment, is essentially thrown away $11 million to the SFPUC over the last several years. And as council member and former mayor, Pat Showalter, I think rightfully pointed out, that money could have been going into further investment into these alternative water supply and, and other water uses that ultimately benefit us here in, in Palo Alto as well. And we have such a symbiotic relationship with the city of Mountain View, like we do all of our partners in this region, and something that's going to benefit Mountain View or Santa Clara or Milpitas or anyone else is really going to be benefiting us here. So, and, and it's also removing, and I know some people have kind of talked about this, a disincentive for conservation because essentially that's what these penalties have been. I mean, Mountain View has been doing exactly what they should be doing, just like we've been doing, what we should be doing as far as improving our water conservation. To, to penalize Mountain View for being so good at conserving water is really just not the type of public policy that we should be supporting. Second, the updated drought plan just makes our system more resilient and more flexible. The Tier One change just means Palo Alto is not going to be penalized with excess use fees as long as the full region is within their total allocation. That's a win-win for us. The new Tier Two formula prioritizes basic indoor The new Tier Two formula prioritizes basic indoor needs first. It ensures predictable allocations and still recognizes the investments cities like ours have made in efficiency. And Ms. Daly, that you really clarified that well, that we're not talking about, we're not talking about reducing shower usage or what you're doing inside. We're really just talking about outdoor watering and some of those severe drought years. And so ultimately, for Palo Alto, the changes are minimal, slightly higher cutbacks in those severe droughts, but still within our existing water shortage contingency plan stages. So no new customer restrictions are going to be required. And ultimately, cost impact to our taxpayer, our ratepayers is going to be negligible. But I think the benefit to regional fairness, drought preparedness, and long-term water reliability is substantial. I encourage my colleagues to vote yes.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. Well, I agree with Councilmember Stone and want to thank him and the mayor for working together on the letter to SFPUC on this other important issue about really obtaining the data that we've been seeking on how the Design Drought has really been calculated and what other scenarios there may be, and really are legitimate questions that we've had for a number of years on whether those assumptions are driving in two directions. One, moving the SFPUC away from the Bay Delta Plan, which would help protect the Bay and the Tuolumne River and impacting our costs to all Basca customers if we are investing in costly water supply efforts that may or may not be needed. So we need that information and be able to really make good decisions. This, these changes do have a modest impact on our ratepayers in two ways, and a small cost impact and a small drought impact, but they're very manageable. And I support it because it's the right thing to do. We basically have had a system where, in our county, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and Milpitas have been paying for water that they're not receiving, and this minimum take approach. And that's both wrong from a cost allocation standpoint, and it works against further conservation. And we hear in our community often a lot of concerns that because the state will impose drought restrictions statewide, that it must mean that we don't have enough water to accommodate new housing. And actually, the hetch-etchy system is the most robust major water system in the state, especially since twenty-five years ago. We did have problems with the hetch-etchy system. But the reason really was because during droughts, San Francisco was releasing valuable water for cheap hydro that benefited their ratepayers only, and that got corrected. And as a result, the hedge, our whole water supply system with the hetchy system now has a great deal more drought capacity and the best in the state. And I, so I do agree that we should be moving forward tonight. These, I also agree that the questions and concerns that were raised by some of the UAC commissioners are important and align with those that Member Stone was raising, but that we shouldn't link these two efforts and use that as some kind of leverage to finally get what we reasonably have been requesting and been getting denied. My understanding is that CEO Smigal has been supportive of those efforts, and that's a real positive switch at Basca because we've been really pursuing this for a half dozen years in Palo Alto. And in that good neighbor approach, I'd really look forward to Mountain View and Sunnyvale and Milpitas joining us in really seeking resolution to these other issues. And that reciprocity and good neighborliness that we have shown going all the way back to when Valley Water Director Cremmon and I created the Joint Recycling Committee ten years ago to move forward on the advanced water recycling. So I'll be supporting these recommendations, and I will also, going forward, be supporting the efforts that the mayor and Councilmember Stone have been pursuing with Basca. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Stone, for your comments tonight in summary of the entire issue and your leadership on the issue. Both points, as Councilmember Burt said, are valid, but they have to be approached quite differently, particularly given the time, the constraints that we're under with getting going with our partners and approving that agreement and saluting our utilities department for working that hard on it. So. Any other comments? Councilmember, let's see, sorry, questioner Baker?
Yeah, just briefly. And it looks like we have this modest improvement in the Tier One change with the family plan. The Tier Two change seems roughly neutral. And there's this tenuous link with this alt-water thing, but I think it is outweighed by the trouble that our neighbors have had with the allocations. But also, I'm concerned about the, if we don't do this, if it fails to go through, it goes back to the Basca Board, at least per the staff report here. And if the Basca Board takes no action or can't come to an agreement, then the SFPUC will determine a Tier Two formula and decide how water will be allocated. That is not something I would look forward to. So to me, it's not like no action is no action. No action will have consequences that are ones that aren't attractive. And so I do think we should do this. But I do agree with everyone that we should still pursue evaluating, you know, pushing for data, pushing for an analysis on whether we need alt-water, and if we do, to what degree, and how it should be pursued, and all these things I don't, I'm not expert in, but can tell, you know, from those whom I respect that it's a serious issue and one that we should be concerned about. But I do not think it should hold this up at this point in time.
Councilmember Stone?
Well, the mayor is ready. I'll make the staff recommendation.
Go for it.
All right. I'll move the staff recommendation. Second. And I don't need to speak to it further. I don't need to speak to it further. I'm excited about this.
If there are no further comments, we can go to a vote.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Finkler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one. Councilmember Lithgow Hines absent.
And one more thank you to the utilities headliners who carried the ball on this for that many years and that many meetings. And other things you haven't even told us yet. So thanks very much. All right, I see no other agenda items tonight. We stand adjourned.